I call this meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Monday, April 16th. This is a regular meeting of the Richfield School Board. In attendance this evening, we have board members Tim Paulus, Crystal Brockie, John Ashmead, Peter Tensing, Paula Cole, Student Representative Matthew Kifflue. I'm Christine Malik, the Chair, and we also have our Superintendent Yunowski with us tonight. I would like to remind us of the Richfield Public Schools' mission statement. "Richfield Public Schools inspires and empowers each individual to learn, grow, and excel." We will keep this in the forefront of our minds as we work together this evening. We'll start with review and approval of the agenda. Is anyone prepared to move the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Ashmead, a second by Ms. Cole. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Chair votes aye, and the agenda is approved. This evening is a public comment evening, but we have had no request for public comment. So we will move on to information and proposals, non-action items, and reports and information from school sources, starting with the superintendent update.
Alright, so I am pleased to be bringing Dr. Roby to us this evening. The Board had discussed at a previous meeting graduation rates. We talked about them over this past year in relationship to my goal, Simon, working towards achieving gains in the overall achievement rate. But the Board wanted some further detail and wanted to talk about longer term and some disaggregation of our data. And so Dr. Roby is here tonight to begin with a presentation in that area.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to be providing an overview of the graduation rates for Richfield, and I want to share a little bit of data with you. The state made some significant changes with the calculation method. They've applied a new calculation, and they're going back six years. And what this means, that previous year's rates have been changed as well. Just a quick overview. The state rate from last year to this year is up. It was at a rate, graduation rate, of 82.68, and it's up from an 82.52 from last year. Our district graduation rate was 75.74, up from 74.81 from last year. And then our high school graduation rate is, was 80.88, and it's down from the high of 81.2 last year. And this is just an overview of what the Every Child, Every Student Succeed Act, or ESSA, it's going back, I'm going to do a five-year overview, and we cannot use data from the old calculations. We have to make sure, for comparison purposes, that we're explaining them with the new calculations. Go ahead. Some of the changes, the dropout rule, the old rate was when students were calculated from their dropout, it was based on the last school that they attended. And now, student calculation where a dropout is counted is from the school where they spent most of their time. So if you have a student who spends the most of their time during that school year at Richfield, and they transfer to another school nearby and drop from that school, they're counted on our dropout rate. Ethnic and racial categories, there's been an expansion of, from five now to seven racial categories, and that includes a delineation for East African, and I'm drawing a blank at the, do you remember what it is, Kaysha? East African is one of the groups. Inclusion of our special education groups. Previously, we were counting students by any point that they were, we were adding any point that they were in high school, that they were identified in those special categories. Now they're included as part of that subgroup. And then we're going from a four-year through six-year graduation rate to a four-year to seven-year graduation rate. So they're adding an additional year that we're looking at our students. Go ahead. If you look at Richfield in comparison to some of our neighboring districts, and this is the five-year range of where we've grown, we've seen overall 14.1% gain over the last four, five years. And that's significant in comparison to some of our neighboring districts of Minneapolis, St. Paul, St. Anthony, which is similar in size to us, as well as Prior Lake Savage. And then if you break it down by ethnicity, you can see where we're making growth. Overall, for our students, it was a 13%, 13-point gain. And then by ethnic groups, you can see where we're making some major gains over the last few years. Most significantly, with our ELL and Latino learners, as well as our female and our free and reduced qualified students. This is just showing a comparison of the state to Richfield, and our overall data was stagnant, but there's some significant highlights. Over the seven-year rate, we have gained by four points. The categories, over the same time, all categories, we've outpaced, with the exception of our special education. So our students by race, by gender, we've outpaced the state, with the exception of our special education students. And we are closing the gap between our students of color and our white students. And looking at our seven-year rate, you'll see that it's comparable to the state with some of those same continuing graphics. Closing the gap over time, this is another way to look at our data. If you look specifically at our students, our white students versus our non-white students, over the last five years, that gap is getting closer, with our students all achieving. But we're seeing a closure and gap between Richfield students. And then in comparison to the state, what you're seeing is that we are outpacing the state significantly. Same thing when we break it down by subgroups. Our Latino students, five years ago, we were at about 44% of our four-year, of our four-year graduation rate for our Latino students, and we are now at 77.1, outpacing the state, which is in the green. Our African-American students, we are, we have continually grown at the same rate at the state, but we are still achieving at a higher rate, but those lines are parallel. Our Asian students, we are, if you look at what we're doing with the state, we're getting closer to our, closing the gap between what the state is doing and what our, what we're doing with our students. We started at 66%, and now in 2017, we've grown to 81%, 81.3. And then with our ELL learners, as I said before, that has probably been our largest growth area, where we have surpassed the state, and we continue to climb. Same thing with our free and reduced lunch. And the last thing that I want to kind of point out is around accountability. This is how we've been identified. We are one of the districts that have been identified by our subgroup, specifically with our ELL, excuse me, not our ELL, our special education students, and our subgroup of our RSEP students, where we have a graduation rate lower than 67%. Some of the reasons might be because those students oftentimes have life circumstances that account for why they may not be graduating on time, but we are able to capture those students in either the five-year, six-year, or seven-year graduation rate. And recently, our team did go to MDE to have a discussion around some ideas and some things that, how they're identifying students, and some ideas around how we can do some programming differently. Go ahead. And so the first group that I mentioned is that our special education group. We are graduating at a rate of 50%. There was 44 students in the class of 2017. And I didn't mention this before, we're always a year behind when we get our actual official graduation rate. So usually, are reported in February, and it's from the previous school year. And a lot of the reasons why students who are in transition programs may need a little bit more time to make sure that they have life skills and other support, so that they are ready to be independent once they do actually graduate from high school. And then with our RSEP program, that's our college experience program that's co-located on the Normandale campus. We usually for, for the, before they identify a subgroup, you have to have a minimum of 20, and we had exactly 20 students. And so that's why we are identified for that particular population. And we wanted to make sure that we were able to break down what our graduation rates were for that particular group. Three graduates, five that dropped out. We have a couple who are still continuing within their program, and then three that are unknown. Questions or comments?
When you say unknown for those from RSEP, is it that they have not a very steady attendance, or we hope that they'll be back? What?
No, it, it means unknown, where we may not be able to track, and where we can say they've gone to this program, or they've decided to go back to work. They haven't responded always to, to let us know what their plans are. And so sometimes it's just, we really don't know where they are.
Other questions?
I have a question about the graduation rate for special ed students, or students in special ed.
Sure.
Is, what is, how does our 50% compare to the state? We didn't have a graphic for that.
I don't remember.
I don't have the graphic, or I don't know what the state, I can pull it out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember.
Okay. And if we refer a student to, say, District 287, or to a different program to receive services, do they count within our rate, or within the district that we refer them to?
Within the district, as long, with the new system, if they regret where they've spent most of their time. So if they've spent most of their time with us, then they count on our graduation rate. And if they drop out after going to another program, then they count against our graduation rate.
And is, was, is that consistent? Don't we have something where we remain the student's academic home of some kind, or is that just for financial purposes?
That's for financial purposes.
Okay, okay. And one last thing, the free and reduced lunch population, is that at a single point in time, at any point in time in high school, year of graduation?
That's a good question. I'm assuming how they've identified that particular school year, but I, I-
I believe the new calculation has it, on that particular, at any, yeah, at any point. And most of those have changed. And then looking up, Richfield High School Special Ed graduation rate, is it 50, with statewide at 61.2? It's one of the areas we're looking to close around.
I had two questions. One, I think it's, some of what, well, a part of what Tim was raising, the new dropout rule is something that I know we talked a lot about in the ESSA committee meetings, in terms of where dropout should count. Should it count literally at the last place they were enrolled, or should it count as the place where they spent more of their academic time? And I personally am excited that it's, you know, it's for the place where you spent the bulk of your time. So if you were just at a school for six months or less, the dropout does not count against, quote unquote, "that" school. Do we think that that is going to affect us in any meaningful way?
Yeah, I mean, and the reason why, yes. So it will affect us because students are often very mobile, and they leave and come to different communities for various reasons. I would say very generally, when a, we want to make sure, and like with our alternative program, with the RSEP program, once they leave the high school, we are still working with them to get them to graduate from high school. And we had a discussion specifically around our moral obligation to make sure that students, even though they may not finish in that four-year timeframe, but to make sure that we are helping them graduate, so, because we know that that has some impact on, kind of, on their future and what they're able to do. And so I am, I have kind of mixed feelings about both, because I think sometimes when students leave us, if, wherever they go, if they don't make sure that they have a soft landing, you know, because they don't want, because it doesn't count against their particular school, they may not be as concerned. But I think as an educator, there's a higher, more obligation to make sure that the people who are in front of you do get that support, and you help them graduate, even if it's not in that four years. So that's kind of a long way to say that, yeah, it has some impact.
Well, and I hope that's where measuring both the four-year and the seven-year graduation rate will also help, because I do think it's important that we're not just paying attention to students who are going to graduate in four years, but are looking at the full picture, because we know some of our students need more time than that, and deserve more time than that. The other question that I was going to ask is related to the accountability plan, and knowing that the Department of Education sort of, you know, big plan of support are these regional centers of excellence. And I'm glad that you went to the meeting recently to learn more about that. So I'm curious whether we have experienced working with any of the regional centers to date, because they have been around. It's not, it's not a new thing. So I'm curious just your thoughts on how you think you might actually experience that, and how to make the most of it, given that we do have some student groups who meet that threshold.
And so I'm going to separate my feelings versus the work that they've done with our district. We have worked with them previously through title programs and such, when we've had students who have been identif, or excuse me, schools that have been identified as need improvement schools, or on those underperforming lists. And, and so it's always good to partner with other organizations, and I, and to get ideas about what things are taking place in other communities. And so my personal feelings around that is that I think that a lot of the work that they have suggested is not necessarily new or innovative. I think that we have lots of ideas within our own system, and that we're able to do some of those networking things with other district communities and such. And so I don't know the, if it helps us to kind of really draw a plan, they are there to be accountable partners for us, and I do appreciate that. But offering innovation and things that we haven't thought of, I've not experienced that, in my personal opinion.
Thank you. That's good to know.
Yeah, we have worked in conjunction with a couple of our elementary schools and partnered with them. They tend to look at our school improvement plans, look at the data we're doing. We've seen them participate in a lot of the work that they're, that we are doing. And they have been seated at the table, engaged in academic conversations with us. So that has been, you know, they have been collaborative and positive and easy to work with, and they have been present for those conversations. So that's, that's been our experience over a couple of years, I would say.
Other questions? Alright, I'm going to make a quick transition. You can go ahead and throw it to that. We have our teaching and learning team here to provide an overview of some of the initiatives and the work that we've been doing this year in preparation for the upcoming 18, 19 school year. And I'm going to invite all of them up to share different components. We are on a 15-to-20-minute time presentation, and so we want to make sure that we provide detailed information, but also be accountable with brevity. Dr. Clarkson, Ms. Gonzalez, Dr. Willhite, Ms. Clayson, Ms. Hutner, and Mr. Kling are part of the teaching and learning team.
So some of the things we've been talking about in regard to curriculum instruction is working to expand and deepen our curriculum. We're really moving, having gone through our instructional model to a place where we're really looking at the curriculum, looking to ensure it aligns to standards, and that we do a much better job of continuing to ensure that it reflects our students and reflects our community more effectively as we continue to expand the curriculum that we're working with. So with that, Dr. Roby.
Alright. And so as the superintendent kind of just reminded us of our vision, our strategy, do you want to go strategy one?
Yep.
Is provide relevant, challenging curriculum to make sure that all of our students' learning is engaging and rigorous. And so each of our team members will kind of give an overview of information related to their content area or department that they lead. Am I doing class sections? Oh, that's me. We are going to talk a little bit more about this in the next presentation, but we have been having some discussions around class sections and what people, by building, are in preference of with regard to our class sizes, specifically at the kindergarten and first grade level. And we do have a presentation later on this afternoon, this evening, with respect to that, with about, with, related to kind of the, what does the research say about class sizes and instruction and student achievement?
We put this in here, good evening, everybody. We put this slide in here just as a review of what our state standard schedule is. It is wise for districts to follow the state review schedule for standards. We recent, the state recently released its near-final draft of the art standards, and here is just kind of an overview of the next cycle coming up. The schedule repeats every 10 years. With the standards, a district is required for full implementation after two years of when the, the standards are adopted. So for this one, I have a handout, because I'm going to go quickly. Thank you. I have a handout that outlines the details, so I'm not going to go into all of this, but in pre-K-12 literacy, we are focusing on instructional practice, a focus on data, and a deep understanding of the standards, which is where we all start. At K-5, we are looking at the integration of reading and writing. For 612, we are looking at an integration of literacy instruction, both in ELA and the rest of the content areas, so our content standards for literacy, and a strong focus, a very strong focus on cultural relevance. The windows and mirrors that help learning be engaging, motivational, and real for the students. And so it all is focusing, my job is focusing on working to enhance the skills of the teacher in the classroom.
So for the dual-language immersion program, so in ninth grade, you can see that we're still requiring the Spanish language arts in ninth, and then we have added either-or core math class or core science class. Ideally, we would encourage students to take all three, Spanish language arts, math, and science. And then also doing that in 10th grade, with also the option of doing the social studies in 10th. Again, the students could take all of those if they so choose, and we would love to see that, but it gives some options and some choices.
So we've mapped this out, 912. In grade 11, we are requiring one course, but we are strongly encouraging students to take more than one. The one-requiered course is the AP Spanish Language and Culture, which will prepare students for the AP exam, which is what the DLI students can use to help them earn the seal of biliteracy. In 12th grade, there is no required courses, but we're, we are strongly encouraging students to take the AP Spanish Literature or CIS Spanish class, and any other math or science that they didn't take in Spanish before that they could possibly take.
In the sort of English learner world, we are kind of piloting this idea of having some of our newcomer Spanish speakers also be able to join our DLI students in that math core or science core. And then they'll also still have their English language development courses. So at least this way, they will be able to maintain content at their grade level and in their first language. And then we're going to continue the picturing and writing, the art and literacy, and I think you've seen a previous presentation on that at Centennial. We're going to be still continuing on with the alignment and development for our newcomer courses. We have the STEM newcomer teacher, and that work at, at the STEM school, and then also aligning the middle and high school newcomer courses, strengthening and supporting the co-teaching across all of our K-12 system. And then for our summer school programming for English learners, we have taken the science standards and taken the research from the picturing and writing, and we created some new units, so that kids are gaining an integration of science and writing in the summer programming.
Alright, so I'm going to just provide a brief overview over math. We are in the process of looking at adopting math curriculum at the secondary level. Those who are on the district curriculum advisory committee had an opportunity to have discussions around the math, that, the math program, and we're weighing out two different programs. And we are adopting both 6 through 12 to make sure that there's alignment all the way through high school. At present, in the elementary programs, we are looking at continuing conversations around number talks, and then also making sure that our math programs and our interventions are aligned to our state standards. We are looking to possibly adopt a new math curriculum in the 1920 school year, but we'll be going through a, have been going through a pilot at one particular school with Eureka Math. And if you might recall, earlier in the year, we had Sheridan Hills do a presentation on the Eureka Math program, and they have, at present, have a, are in the process of piloting it for the third through fifth graders, and we are looking at piloting it next year with K-2, and then bringing in the other schools to look at the program to see if it does fit for us for adoption, possibly in school year 1920.
I'll talk a little bit about STEM and science. We have invigorated our partnership with the Mayo Clinic and the University of Minnesota with Inside Out K-5. And we are also looking at a possible partnership with St. Kate's. We are, we are in the process of implementing engineering as elementary at all four elementary sites, and we are putting our heads together and planning a K-12 continuum of STEM focus. And I'll speak a little bit more to that in a minute. The implementation of digital textbooks, CK-12 and grade six to eight science courses, that's going to be starting in the fall. And we were the recent proud parents of a, of a STEM grant for the 612 articulation of computer science, ending with AP Computer Science Principles and AP Computer Science in Java. This grant includes dollars and time for professional development. It's just, just shy of $94,000. We're continuing our work with the seven-period day at the high school with the early college model, and increasing the number of access to and success in courses that provide college credit while in high school. We are continuing our seminar courses for next year, and actually, a lot of our summer curriculum writing is focused on refining those seminar courses to provide even more pinpointed support for our students, and equitable access to courses, obviously, that we know that were previously offered as a zero-hour-only course.
So I'll speak, I'll speak briefly, because I'm going to speak more to this in a little bit, but the priorities in, and I'm Cora Kling, the technology director. The inquiry, or excuse me, the priorities next year for technology will be to increase access. I'll explain that in more detail in a bit. Increasing support for all of our stakeholders, streamlining and expanding professional development offerings, and finally, educating all stakeholders in the process of what we're doing, and many other facets. So I get an opportunity to expand on this in a little bit, so I'll save it for then.
Good evening. I am going to just give you a quick update on the work that we've been doing in special education. We've been working really hard this year, and will carry over into next year, the alignment of curriculum and instruction and best practices in our center-based program for our students who receive services under the disability category of developmental cognitive delays, and also in our center-based programs for students that have some neurobiological disorders. So students receiving services for emotional behavioral support, autism, some more of those needs around mental health and behavior. This year, one of the, I know it doesn't seem like a big deal, but one of the things we were able to do with our alignment with our neurobi programs is to come up with a better name. And so the work that we've done is to name the programs and power, which I think is a really, it talks about not only what the teachers need, but the students need. We've been working across our elementaries, and will be moving up into our secondaries for alignment of student assistant, student-teacher assistance team process, so that's the pre-referral process, for students that need additional support, that may or may not need special education services. And we've also been working really closely with our interventionists, the special education department and our interventionists, to align curriculum and instruction- department and our interventionists, to align curriculum and instruction and strategy. So we've been meeting throughout this whole year with the general education interventionists and our special education leads. We're looking at using the same assessments, really focusing on math this year and progress monitoring until there'll be some curriculum writing this summer in collaboration with the two. And next year, we are, have the opportunity to have the Department of Education come in and visit with the district to look at an overall evaluation of our special education programs in the district. And that's, it's always on a six-year cycle, so we just finished up self-review and correction, and so next year is the year they come in and they do a site visit for the district. And it looks, I can talk about that at another time.
Hello, going to talk real quickly about our work around providing a safe and supportive school experience for our students. You can see here that this is stuff that we've already reviewed with you all a few months back, but we just want to be able to review and remind you all of this really important work. Another thing that we wanted to let folks know is that the SEL standards have finally been finalized through MDE, and they are aligned to core content standards. We're going to start launching those first with our social workers to utilize in their rubrics and then be working with our Empower team and then district-wide to increase our understanding of SEL standards and how to achieve them K-12. And then the other portions of this work for this year and ongoing is to really identify and implement the behavior framework, make sure that our policies, practices, and even our board policies align with ensuring accountability for disciplinary equity, research and practice strategies to neutralize implicit bias, use trauma-informed practices, our understanding of stress and how that impacts learning and often can arrest learning for our most imperiled students. And then, of course, making sure that all of those supports are aligned district-wide and that our staff have the support to make this a systemized approach to supporting students socially and emotionally. Thank you.
And just to clarify, SEL is social, emotional, learning standards?
Oops.
So this is just another review of the work that we're doing with Equity. And again, superintendent has made a commitment to ensure that all of our district staff will be trained by the end of next year, 2019, with Innocent Classroom. We are also working with a partnership with the Minnesota Humanities Center on the absent narrative. There's about 12 of us who will be attending a workshop, an educator's workshop this summer and hope to bring that work back to the district in, in the work that we do, continue to do with teachers and in around curriculum and instruction. We are exploring a partnership with ISD 287 around accelerated learning opportunities and opportunities for our students to participate in classes and experiences if they're not able to come off campus, to make sure that they still have those opportunities, and we're working through that with our TNL team. And then also, just always looking at our curriculum and the things that we offer through a lens of Equity and how do we get voices and experiences of diverse cultures and backgrounds into the classroom and to the hands of our instructors.
Hi, everybody. I'm here to talk about early learning, and we really spent the majority of our time this year just transitioning all of our early childhood programs to have that Richfield identity. And so we worked with Early Childhood Family Education. I did a handout, just some brief bullet points, Spanish on the other side, English on one side, our preschool for threes and fours and early childhood screening. Our focus areas for all of those programs are the social, emotional, learning, literacy, and math, and we're aligning that to our kindergarten, beginning the steps to do that. One of our professional development days was spending a half a day with our kindergarten teachers and our early childhood teachers, talking about the crossover and integration and what we need to do better to help our kids transition. We did receive a screen at three grant this year, and the goal of that grant was to increase the number of children of color screened, increase the number of three-year-old screens, and we have had great success with that, and we'll be reporting on that at the end of the year, give you some real numbers. And then lastly, we developed a family literacy program. We have not had one on-site here at Richfield, and the family literacy program is a program that works on parent education, English classes for families who, English is not their first language. We have 20 families in the program now, and I think we're up, I think we have six, seven different languages. And then there's an early childhood piece and a time for parents and kids to spend together.
So recognizing that is a lot of information, but we wanted to give you a snapshot of what we were doing and what our plans are for the 1819 school year by subject area, by department. And we did ask our full TNL team to come to present, and so if there are questions that we can specifically answer by the areas that we oversee, we are glad to do so.
Thanks, Nicole.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was amazing.
I do have a couple of questions.
Excellent.
I'm going to start with Kasia. These are DLI questions. So, yes, welcome. I'm curious about the access to the DLI program for those students whose first language is Spanish, and you're piloting that at the high school. Do we have any vision of that in the middle school? And I think we have some experience, if I recall correctly, of integrating kids who had, didn't necessarily start at the very beginning.
Right. So it's not necessarily that they would, so kind of two ways, well, maybe three. So let me go back to the middle school. So yes, because our newcomers in our middle school are in the social studies, Spanish language, the social studies class, so they're getting their content class in social studies in Spanish. So we have that. We don't have a math in Spanish or a science in Spanish at the middle school, so that's why we aren't doing that there. So we kind of have already followed that trajectory. And so in high school, then, because in the ninth grade, they have the opportunity to be in the math or the sciences, that's why we're doing it in that area. And then the 10th grade, they could be in the math, the science, or the social studies.
And so our intention is to be offering this with the 1819 school year?
Yes, next year.
Okay. So I guess we'll, maybe this time next year, we'll be at least looking to see what the enrollment is like, you know, so.
And I should say too, it's not that all the students will necessarily be part of DLI. One of the, that probably is yet to come. Some of the students don't have as strong of Spanish literacy in their backpacks, so that is the one area where we're kind of wanting to go content because accessing that math and accessing that science, we felt that that would be, if they didn't have a real strong Spanish literacy background, the SLA was kind of a big gap. So what we saw last year with a couple of enrollees were students, they struggled in their English class, and then they also struggled in their Spanish language arts class. This year, we're trying it in the sciences and math and then trying to bump up some of the English pieces.
Great. I'm also very curious to hear about what kind of enrollment you see in the summer program. So if we could think of this as, okay, if there's a percentage, a rough, yes, percentage of kids who would be appropriate for that program, how, what's our capture on getting those kids to spend part of their summer with us?
In the summer, the...
The program, so that, I'm referring to the program, if I'm recalling correctly, there was a program that you had designed specifically for...
To join us for math and picturing and writing.
English language learners, yeah.
So that's K-8. So in the middle school, the students that would be newcomers are always encouraged, and we do try and target specifically with the middle school teacher to reach out to those families and say, here's what we can do at our middle school. So right now, the design for middle school is on body system, so circulatory system, nervous system, respiratory system, with the research writing and science. So if they come to summer school, that's what they'd be getting for their research writing aligned to science, then they would be tagging into their regular math classes. In the K-4, those students, if they, if we have newcomers of any language background, we would encourage them to go. At this point, too, we are looking at some of those students where on their access scores they need a boost in writing, and so we're encouraging those, have that still a little bit of a gap in the writing.
Great, thank you.
Can you, before you go, can you elaborate a little bit more on the term used for the newcomer students? I've heard it used in different ways, but I...
Sure.
It's more than just someone new to Richfield Public Schools.
Correct. It's usually new to country.
Right.
Yep, and so there's, yeah, there are a lot of different terms. So when I think of newcomers, I think oftentimes they are new to the United States or new to the United, the US school system. So we have some students that may have been residing here but have not actually been in school yet. So we have one case of a first grader who's actually been in the United States, did not go to kindergarten, so joined us in first grade. So he, although resided in the US, hasn't, he's still part of our newcomer group. When we talk about older students, you might hear the term SLIF, or Students with Limited and Interrupted Formal Education. By federal definition, they come after sixth grade, so seventh grade and beyond have less than, usually a two-year gap between their reading and math scores, don't always have a very strong first language literacy background, and often have not been in a US school consecutively or overall for about two, two years, I think that timeframe is. And we usually identify those students by the first of June.
Yeah, because I, I mean, from what I've learned about it, those kids have a lot of other, beyond that, needs with social, emotional learning and being in a completely new...
Especially if they're coming from countries where there's civil war, a lot of unrest, or if they've been in a refugee camp for, for a long time. We also have newcomers, though, that have come from just the family decides to come, and they, we don't see the same impact of trauma on them.
Thanks.
I have, Kasia, before you run away. I'm asking about the pilot program, the high school math and science, and so just for clarity,
that is not for students who are in the DLI program, that would be for students who are outside the DLI program?
No, the students in DLI can also take that math and that, that science, those science classes. And we thought this would be a nice addition because it means that you have native Spanish speakers in, then with students who are trying to become more proficient in Spanish. And then at the same time, the students who have that proficiency already, they're being a, they will not have to also navigate the English to get to that academic grade level.
Is that fairly common or uncommon broadly to have? I mean, we have like a dual-language program, right, so we have sort of restriction on who can, who can access it?
I will say, I am not as aware of a lot of programs that have their newcomers in those core classes. It doesn't mean that it's not happening, I just, I don't know about it. I probably, when Principal Shasivan and I went to a training in November in Texas, we saw that one of their high schools that had really good results for their immersion students also had a lot of core classes where they encouraged their English learners to also join in those classes. So this idea was kind of born out of that training.
And so how do we assist them now? Is it, are they, such students, are they just dropped into the, the English language instruction and possibly with some PLL supports?
When possible, yes. Sometimes it's not possible because we have designed courses to specifically bump up the reading and writing of level ones and level two students, plus trying to get to all the students in all the grade levels has been, we only have so many sections. So that's where having the coaching come in and working with teachers to help create some scaffolds and doing extra professional development for them. That's the support, so we'll see what kind of results we get trying it this way.
And one last one, on the, the summer program, you had mentioned sort of English language development and integrated writing. Do we have a concerted, like a vocabulary program that we have, whether it's, whether it's for ELL students or just broadly for, for students, say, K-5 or...
I wouldn't say not really a program for vocabulary. I think it's really sitting down with the team and saying, here's what is expected. So if we're doing forces in motion, what kind of language and terminology would one expect the teacher to be using, and what would we want to see in here students to be using in writing? And then how do we specifically and explicitly teach that? And not so much me just having you write down the definition, but how do we actually get students to use their senses, get them outside and experience what those words actually mean?
All right, thanks.
Other questions?
I do have one, and Kasia, you get to sit down.
Okay.
I think. But it's probably for you, Tia, though others might also want to chime in. I was, you know, excited to hear at several points, this, you know, need for bringing more culturally and personally relevant material into curricula, and I would just love to hear a little bit more about how we are doing that and what, what we're doing to make sure that that is happening on a somewhat consistent basis for kids across schools, across content areas, et cetera.
So I can speak to my area and specifically in regard to new materials being purchased. I can talk first to the work that I've been doing for the last, over three years now with, with secondary, with 6 through 12. We started there with purchasing of new materials, and I have a tool that comes out of the Southern Law Poverty Center that is called a text complexity tool, and it's basically kind of like a, it's just a series, it's a bridge kind of series of questions that talk not only about, about complexity as far as, you know, length of sentences and, you know, that type of complexity of, of words, but also complexity of ideas. And then it goes into talking about, for instance, you know, who, who's authored it, right? So it's not even just, you know, I'll just use a novel, for example. It's not just that the character is a, is a person of color, which is fine, right? But it's much more powerful when the students are seeing that the author is an author of color and that it's, it's, it's an authentic, you know, if I'm, if I'm reading a piece of work about a girl from Mexico, it's really great if the author is a female person from Mexico, right? So those, that's the type of tool that I'm using for ELA, and that's K-12. It's kind of taken root in social studies as well, so I can speak to those two areas probably the most in that we're really talking about, as far as a historical perspective, talking about whose perspective, you know, who tells history, right, and what, and what that's coming from. And so the teachers have really been working hard to take a step back of what it is that they've loved the most in teaching and whether or not that that's actually what the students need to be learning.
And with regard to other subject areas kind of related, is that we are conscious of that as we are looking at other curriculums. I'm thinking specifically around sexual health and being very mindful of how things are presented and what, how, how does it reflect our own community and the values and worries of our community? We want to make sure that we are providing information from a very clinical kind of perspective and not have it loaded with other things that could be perceived as insensitive or inappropriate. I would say also the work that we are beginning to do with Minnesota Humanities Center, we have teachers from across the district at different grade spans and different buildings where they will be the first adopters around, let's really looking, you know, really looking at our curriculum and seeing from, as Tia alluded to, the different perspectives and making sure that we do have author's voice, we do have more representation, and then also looking at perspectives of those who have been underserved or underrepresented in different communities and see how do they, what is their perspective on issues or things that we've learned about historically?
Thanks, Tia. Appreciate it.
Can I clarify, ask Tia, you'd mentioned finding sort of different source materials for, for these various courses. Is that for the sort of the mainstream or core courses, like, okay?
Yeah.
Because I was going to ask, like relating to seven-period day, one of the things that excited me about the idea of seven-period day is it could open up this whole world of, of, of courses driven by student demand, right, or, or instructor interest, right? And so if they could, we could get the combination of staff interest in a topic and student interest in the same topic, and we could help create courses. And so, you know, social studies and language arts are, have sort of an infinite, you know, no boundary of where they could go, whether it's a specific topic or a, or a series of novels or anything you'd like, that they could be done, and it could be ethnocentric or, you know, you could pick whatever type of experience you were looking for and have a course built around it. And so have we, have we made it clear to the students and the staff that they, and incentivized them properly to help create this and, and keep... incentivized them properly to help create this and, and keep this going? Because I, you know, it might work within, you know, we had the later goal of equity and, and relevant courses. And so this is a way we, we could also have it, where, you know, if someone says, geez, I wish I had a course in this, you could, if you helped, if you could find a staff member to support it and help design it yourself.
You, you can, but it, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to say this with a very loving heart, it takes a village. And, and we, we need to help, we need to, we all, all of us as a team, need to help our students see the possibilities, because courses run when there's enrollment.
Right.
And courses don't run when there's not enrollment. And right now, we have a teacher who's, who's gone through training for CIS African-American Studies. We offered it the, the first year, and the second year, we didn't get enough to, to run the course. And so I think that, you know, I, I take that as some, as work that I need to do, and, and with a team others need to do, to help students, to encourage them, that like, you will learn like amazing American history through a course like this.
Right.
So it's, it's a work in progress, but it takes all of us to help students and, and families to know that that is a possibility.
Now, yeah, I'd be curious to see, right, so if we always aim for, if, if we require the course carry the CIS banner, then we might be, there might be students reluctant to try it in the first place, right?
Yep.
And so I, I think if we, if, I, I agree with you that we have to get the message out to students that, that courses can be driven by them and their demand.
Yep, I agree.
Along with that, some of those CIS courses, and most of those advanced courses, there's seminar courses that are paired with them, and so for that very reason, to make sure that students know that, as they are taking these more rigorous advanced courses, there is also a support course that allows for that additional support and resource and, and practice so that they can be successful.
And, and that, that's great, but we, we have such a, I mean, and I, there are limitations to what we can do, and we have this, this push, and I support it completely, to have students take more courses that are, bear college credit, or are, or listed on a checklist as rigorous. But it is also okay for them to take courses that are interesting.
Yes.
On, on the face of it to them, and it doesn't have to, you know, learning can be great, just as, for learning's sake, and it doesn't have to get you college credit, and, and it could still be something that is interesting at an admissions office, or as fodder for an essay, and things like that. So I, I, I'd like to think we weren't limited by trying to, to cover it all with one course, like and say, wow, what, what can we do from within the CIS framework, although I, I appreciate it? But if we have that, and the expectation is we also have those seminar courses, we run out of real estate fast. You know, and seven periods isn't enough, and now we need eight, which we're not going to have.
So I'd like to, I'd like to dovetail on, onto that topic, yeah. And this is specific to the seminar courses and a point that Tia had made earlier. So one of the things I heard from you, Tia, was that you're working on refining the seminar courses to pinpoint the content, I think is the term, the, the language that you used. So what I'm hearing there, and tell me if I'm hearing correct, is that there's a focus on differentiating the instruction in that seminar course, so that it's more than just sort of reteaching, but that you're really focusing in on what does this student need, student A, student B, student C, and you're using that time to have more of that differentiated support. Am I, and so I'm getting that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. And I think this is, for me, just a, I guess a, I don't know if I want to call it a soapbox, but something that I, that I think would be really great would be the capacity, and it's a little bit of a scheduling hurdle perhaps, but the capacity to support, to use that time to support students in multiple content areas. So a student could potentially be supported both in math and physics during that hour as you're sort of differentiating, and so that's something that I think would be great if we're able to use that time.
And we talked about that when we were building this model out, the, and as we, I think as we continue to build the model, we'll be able to maybe find that sweet spot a little bit, but we wanted to, we wanted to ensure that students were with teachers who knew the content well, so that it was not like Ms. Clayson, as an ELA teacher, has a bunch of students that she's trying to support in calculus.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
So, you know, kind of refining that as we continue to make, but making sure...
That might be interesting, though.
What's that?
That might be interesting.
Well, you know, I was a math teacher.
All right.
But it, but not calculus.
Yeah.
So making sure that it's not just a study hall.
Yeah, exactly. So anyway, I totally appreciate that this is, that it's a big ask, and, you know, I would sort of set it out there as an aspirational goal, and I'm just grateful that you're thinking about it.
And as we do think about that, I'm not going to put Mr. Kling on the spot, but one of the things we have talked about with Corey, our Director of Technology, is as we continue the rollout of technology, and as we do move down, further down the pathway of personalized learning and digital learning, it does provide us some opportunities to be more flexible in our service delivery model to students, with one teacher covering multiple subject areas, using technology to support that. And something that he and I have had conversations about, that he had already had conversations with Dr. Roby about as we, as we go down those roads and as, as we continue out with our technology work, too.
Any more questions or comments?
I mean, I was going to ask Christina to define SEL standards, but, you know, we already got that done.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, because we can't get enough of Dr. Roby rolling forward with things.
Big night.
So we asked her, and before she gets started, we asked her to come back, and I was going to come back with some conversations around those next steps in our budget. We got some feedback from our schools, and just as reminders, so we took our first steps in our preliminary budget work with our staffing, and we reduced our classroom size by two across the entire district by adjusting our budgetary formula for teachers. And so we reduced all of our class sizes by two in the initial formula, and we're looking at additional supports to our students. And so the next area to possibly reduce, we're looking specifically to our primary years and looking at kindergarten and first grade. And so one of the things the board was tasked to talk about, and we cast each other back and forth, was let's talk about what are the priorities in kindergarten and first grade, and do we really want to take those next steps to reduce kindergarten and first grade further? And so we asked our principals to go out, to talk to parents, to also gather some feedback from their staff, so we can have a conversation with this group. That conversation also went to FPAC, a conversation on what are the top priorities? Do class sizes only mean adding numbers of teachers, or do class sizes mean adding paraprofessionals, so there are two adults to one student? What's interesting is, is that at each school, feedback was relatively overwhelming, yet between schools, feedback was quite different, and it, and it followed an interesting pattern. At Centennial, where their current projections for class sizes in K-1 are in the very low twenties, or 20 to 21, they were excited by the idea of adding paraprofessionals to their classrooms. At our other three schools in RDLS, STEM, and Sheridan, where their class sizes project out to 24, 25, they were much more interested and excited about the idea of additional class sections. And so, well, we were hoping to get specific clarity perhaps across the district. What we did get is that it seems like if your class sizes are in the 20, 21 range, the idea of a paraprofessional in primary is a, is obviously a pretty significantly positive add. And yet, if your class size is in the 24, 25 range, it also appeared that reducing that class size was a bigger priority than having that paraprofessional. The additional piece of information that I asked Dr. Roby, and we asked Dr. Roby to come back with, was an update on class size research, so we could also have that. And just as a foreshadowing, at the end of this, I'm going to come back to the board to ask for some guidance. The question being around our flexibility to possibly add some additional class sections in kindergarten, first grade, paraprofessionals, if that's something that is flexible, or if we really want to focus on long-term fiscal stability and not, and not use most of the referendum funds to make sure that we are really targeting that next step within kindergarten and first grade. So with that, Dr. Roby, can you give us a little bit of an update on class size research?
And actually, I am going to be turning this report over to the very able and well-studied Ms. Clayson, as she has collected the research around class size, and there are lots of varying opinions about what is the sweet spot for student engagement and the teacher-to-student ratio, so I'm going to turn it over to Tia.
Thank you. Hi again. So this is a debate that is not unique to Richfield, it's not unique to this year, and it's not an easy one. It's, it's ever-present, it's pretty controversial, it's both a policy and a funding issue, and in doing the research on the literature, some things can be a bit conflicting, but I hope to try and clarify a few things. So when you do any research on class size, you immediately go to the king of class size researching, and that's John Hattie. He's an Australian researcher, and he wanted to know not just what worked, but what worked best, because again, we, we are talking about public education with limited funds, you want to get the biggest bang for your buck, right? So he did something that, I'm in my doctoral program right now, and so there's a lot of, you know, we're, we're studying a lot of different ways of, of doing research, and this, like this dude's out of the park, right? So he, he didn't just do, he didn't just analyze studies, he did meta-analyses on meta-analyses. So he has done, basically studied thousands and thousands and thousands of classrooms. He has a list, his first list came out in 2009, he published a book called Visible Learning. He updated the list in 2016, there are 195 influences and effect sizes related to student achievement. Basically, in his list, your tipping point is a .40 effect size, which basically is the average or typical growth that a student would make in, in a, in a given year, given, you know, a nice lovely little situation of learning in the classroom. This, this was a video that I don't think is going to play, given the, the format, but what I can pull out of this little two-minute video, it really was just kind of an introduction by this guy who had a really thick Australian accent. But three things that Hattie say are the most important things for teachers to learn and remember and understand, is that number one, they need to know exactly what the student's strengths and needs are, the, both, both quantitative data, such as, you know, like test scores, but also that qualitative data, interest surveys, you know, entrance inventories, conferencing, that type of stuff, but really understanding the strengths of the student and also the needs of the student. The second thing is that teachers need to ensure that students understand how to get to the next level, right? So it's not just getting everything right, but it's actually learning to get to that next level. So doing modeling, having rubrics, working with checklists, conferencing, that kind of stuff. And the last one is quality feedback. The sticker on the paper and the good job has to have the circle with the big red mark through it. They, students need to have explicit understanding of not only what to improve, but how to improve, and also what they are doing well. So like I said before, a .40 effect size basically means a year's growth in a year's time, all right? A typical growth for a student. Average growth that students would make, barring, you know, a ton of negative influences. He does not say in his research that class size has no effect. And that has been something that the people who, you know, tried to dispel a lot of, of his stuff say, well, he's saying that class size doesn't have any effect, and that's not what he says. He, in his list, in the work that he's done, a class size has an effect size of .21, okay? So his argument, and the, and the work that he has done, is basically saying, with limited funding, you should take a look at, you know, focusing on what is the, what gets the largest effect size on student achievement. So we call on the six super-factors here, the six top effect sizes on student achievement. Now, I'm going to say it one more time, just because I'm a teacher, .40 is typical average growth, okay? Take a look at these effect sizes, all right? The number one is...
So if, Tia?
Yeah.
When, so if .40 is typical average growth within a year, and class size is .21, is that on top of the, the typical average growth?
No.
So it means you take someone who has, I mean, so, isn't the expectation one full year in a year's time?
Yes.
Okay, so it is, it has a positive impact, but not...
Yes.
I'm just trying to see...
So if you think of a zero, .0 is having no effect at all.
Right.
Completely neutral, right? And, and below zero is a negative effect. Anything above a zero has, has some sort of a positive effect. It's just that, given, in its isolation, it wouldn't, that alone would not transfer to a year's growth in a year's time. Does that make sense?
So if the only factor you improved was class size, it wouldn't have enough of an impact...
Right.
...to get it done, but it would have a small positive...
Exactly.
Yes, small supportive effect.
Yep.
Thank you.
So here are, are the six ones, and, and I had to go back, it's been a while since I got my undergrad minor in psychology, so I had to re-remember a couple of things, and I'll get to that in a minute. But his new list, the teacher estimates of achievement have an effect size of a 1.62. That's four times the average growth.
And does that translate to expectations? I was trying to figure out what that actually means.
Yeah, I, yes.
Okay.
So teacher estimates of achievement, this one basically means knowledge of the students in the classroom and creating expectations around what you think students can do. That's what, that's what that is, okay? So when we're going back to what I said with the video, that one of the best things that teachers can do is really understand the strengths and challenges of students, it, it speaks right to that number one, okay? Collective teacher efficacy is a .15, or 1.57. And basically, teacher efficacy is a teacher believing that he or she has the power to change the trajectory of a student, no matter what happens outside of the school. So collective teacher efficacy is a grade level going, okay, these are our kids, but wow, we are wonder women, right? And we can, we can change the course of their life. That's what that one is. Self-reported grades, that's a 1.33 effect size. That basically, what, what self-reported grades is students predicting, basically students, what, what students say that they can do. So, you know, my daughter coming home in second grade after the mad math minute and saying, I can't do math. That's number three. And so when students believe that they can do something, obviously, it's going to affect their achievement, because if you could, if you believe you can, you're going to be able to, right? So the Piaget-in-program's were the ones that was like, oh yeah, Piaget, I remember him. But basically, that's the developmental levels, all right? So there are four developmental levels, everything from, you know, sensory motor when you're a baby, all the way up to that abstract thinking when you get up into, you know, past like age 12. And so what these are is basically designing programs around understanding developmental level, and that has a 1.28 effect size. Conceptual change programs, Mike Wallace has talked a, a lot about this, he's, he's really good with this, and the fact that like you teach concepts, and then you teach the misconceptions. But it's also teaching the concepts to teachers and the misconceptions. Like what is reading? You know, I had a conversation with an EL teacher today. What is writing in kindergarten? You know, kindergarten teachers may have varying views on what writing actually is in kindergarten. So it's helping both teachers and students. And then a lot of what we've heard over and over again is the response to intervention, that multi-tiered systems of support, which has a 1.07 effect size. Those are what are known as the six superpowers, or the six super-factors. Like I said, there are negative effect sizes on student achievement, anything below a zero is a negative effect size, retention's one of them. So that has a point, a negative .17 effect size. Class size had about the same effect size as exercise and relaxation, and it's a .21 versus a .22 respectively.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Retention, is that teacher retention that that is talking about?
No, it's student retention, repeating a grade. That's a good question, I should have written that. Okay. So I, I did some, I, I took some time to, and again, I'm in a doctoral program, so it's a lot easier to get Google Scholar and go into Hamblin's University and look at scholarly stuff than it does in a Google search. And I really wanted to hone in on positive research on class size. And everything that I have been able to find talks about the positive effects in class size being at the lower, at the primary grades, okay? So Zinger is, classes in the first four years of school, and he is talking about early childhood and K, K-1 and possibly two. I'm not even going to try to say the next person's name. Yeah. Concentrating, again, what I was finding over and over, concentrating on the early years of schooling, where smaller class sizes have a positive effect. And it's not just, what you have to remember with smaller class sizes is that it has to be somewhat of a significant change in the number of students. So, going down one is not, it's not going to, it's not going to have a very big effect. The last one actually connects quite well to Hattie. And so, for ones that have refuted some of Hattie's research, this is another one where it's actually, it's actually connecting to a lot of it. Class size reduction having a positive effect, but only without paying attention to the other factors that support practice. The ways in which teachers and students work together, the curriculum, and teachers' opportunities and willingness to learn new strategies and ways of doing things. So, it goes back to, at the end of the day, Hattie says, it's everything about what the teacher is doing in the classroom, okay? Hattie does state that smaller class sizes have a positive effect. It's keeping with the other researchers, but there are other practices that, with drastically larger effect sizes on student achievement, but research states that teacher practice and smaller class sizes, especially at the primary grades, can have an impact, okay? Teacher practice needs to change formative assessment, best practice pedagogy, student reflection, bringing in student voice, bringing in discussion. Hattie lists those that I've listed there as some of his top practices. Teacher estimates of achievement, the collector teacher efficacy, self-reported grades, and the response to intervention. Just a little class-sized primer. Thank you.
Tia, just for clarity, I think the research used, referred to class sizes going from roughly like 22, 24, down to 15 or 16, I think. Is that roughly the range that they were talking about, where they had the measured gains of?
Yeah.
Thank you.
More than a 10, more than a 10 to 15 percent reduction.
So, obviously, there is some complexity to the conversation around class sizes. Obviously, as a community, we value class sizes. It's one of the largest conversations that we have in regard to our referendum, was one of the largest conversations of feedback of why people were willing to engage in dialogue with our organization. It's also why we took the first steps to reduce our class size across the district by two, because that also impacted across the entire spectrum of our buildings. The conversation then becomes to take the next steps in regard to primary, which is the area where there is some impact of class sizes from an academic perspective. Primary grades or early education is the area where it would have the largest impact. But then, there's also the other piece of impact, which has to do with the other conversations we have around enrollment, around market share, around how do people feel putting their child into a classroom with 2021 kids in a kindergarten or first grade versus 25, 26 kids in a kindergarten or first grade. And so, as I bring the conversation back to the board, I'm looking for some thoughts to help guide sort of us in the next step of budgeting. And just as a reminder, our budget and finance office will be working with HR and our team to develop a preliminary budget to bring back to the board, I believe, in two weeks. In that, we'll include any other positions that we would have. And so, that would be looking for guidance in regard to kindergarten and first grade, adding some additional sections, and perhaps some paraprofessionals to reduce our ratios and our class sizes, and where the board stands in that regard. Thoughts?
I got a couple of thoughts. So, I really appreciate, Tia, the work that you've done to draw together all this research for us. That's very helpful. Thank you. I think that what I am taking away from what Tia has presented is, is that we, so, I think we're paying attention to the strategy, those six power factors. I do believe that over the last four to six years, I've certainly heard multiple times, reinforced multiple times, that those power factors are part of our overall strategies on improving achievement. And so, it certainly is evident that we can't stop paying attention to any of those things, that in many ways, when I think about, when I think about professional practice, and I'm always, I'm always, just because of my own profession, drawn back to thinking about this in a healthcare context. My patients' expectations of me as a physician, I know that it's very, that it's intellectually challenging for me to master the content of the science of medicine. And it's intellectually challenging for me to engage in continuous professional development, et cetera. However, those are my patients' base expectations when they walk through the door. And I think some of this material is what I would describe as a base expectation for a professional educator. So, having said that, we can't sort of throw away any of the effort that we're putting into supporting those expectations. At the same time, as Tim mentioned, the gain that we can get from reducing class size is something that we've made a commitment on, and we should sort of move forward with that. So, I guess, to me, it sounds like, you know, we went to our community and said, "We need extra money so that we can reduce class sizes." And so, we're not necessarily talking about funneling away from work that we were already doing to reduce class sizes. That's why we approached the community to ask for more. And so, I think that that's still sort of in line with the commitment that we've made. Now, to the sustainability question, I would think, and Mr. Paulus, this is where we're going to lean on your math, I'm warning you right now. I would think that we could put together a projection, a quantitative projection, with some assumptions about inflation, conservative assumptions about what we think the state is going to give us, or not give us, in terms of state aid, and project out where we think we're going to be at in terms of our expenses, in terms of our staff, our staff expenses. So, we could basically put together a quantitative model that said, "Okay, if we project out that we're going to be at a certain number of FTE to support a particular class size, and we assume that we're not going to get a whole lot more money from the state over time, and that our expenses are going to go up due to inflation," we could have some sense of what we should try to hold back from a buffering standpoint, so that we, because what I think, what I feel fairly certain about is that our community would like us to reduce class sizes as much as possible, would also like us to do that in a sustainable way, without sacrificing any of the other good work that we're doing. And so, I think that the important thing for the community to be aware of is that, whereas we may have the dollars today to reduce class sizes by 20 percent, we want to be sure that we're going to be able to sustain that over the next five, six, however many years, before we can reliably budget that. So, that means that, so that we don't have a roller coaster with class size, we're going to need to be responsible and hold back some. And I think we should be able to have some way to quantitate that.
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet with that.
You do? All right. So, in that case, then, we could, we should be able to think about this from a sort of a risk perspective, kind of throwing in some assumptions on what we think is likely and...
It's, yeah, one of the, one of the challenging aspects of it, and you can correct me on this, Steve. When push comes to shove, the state funding and the 2 percent assumed increase year-over-year, to the extent that that doesn't keep up with our actual expenses year-over-year per employee count, right? So, we willfully do that. This is something we all bear, but literally, everyone in the state plays it exactly this way. So, we're all playing the same game, even though, you know, we, we, our costs go up on an annual basis by more than what we expect to get from the state. Okay? So, there's forever going to be pressure on staff, on staff count, if we have them in it, in that. You get a few years out, the amount we get from the referendum money gets dwarfed by the, because the state funding is the lion's share of our funding, and the referendum money is, is a lot and important to have. But eventually, that, the difference between the inflation year-over-year and our costs and the inflow inflation, the inflation on our revenue just grows to such that it actually dwarfs what we have in referendums. So, I think we have to be reasonably cautious. We can still make a lot of progress, I think, but it's, you can only go so far out on the limb before you realize, "Wow, that's, you know, in three years, we'll be having the same conversation." It doesn't take many years. That's my understanding of it. Someone can correct me.
Well, and on another level, we have to be hopeful, too, that making these changes is going to make our district more attractive...
Correct.
...to other families.
Correct.
And if we bring in, you know, a dozen more students, that's more money.
I agree, I agree. I mean, you know, to be fair, when, when community members speak to us, and I don't want to say complain, but they assert that they prefer smaller class sizes, they aren't doing so strictly from a standpoint, they want achievement to go from here to here. There's, there's other things about it in terms of learning environment and just crowd control, right? There's, there's students come home and tell them that, you know, they're shoehorned into a, too many of them into a room, and it just doesn't feel like a comfortable place for that child to learn. And so, there are, there are points where class size has, can have an obvious negative impact, and where it affects us is, someone might look across the highway and see a district that's not far away with, with smaller class size, and just say, "Well, at least I can manage that, even if the rest of it's largely equal."
And if we're looking at the difference between 25, 26, and dropping it down, I mean, if we're looking at 21, I don't think, you know, I don't think you're going to get a lot of parent complaints about 21...
I agree.
...kids in a classroom. But that's not where we are. So, I think we need to, one, I think we need to head in that direction, and we also need to consider the other things that are affected, like you said, the student experience, but also the teacher experience of, they're in a classroom with, you know, 27 kindergarteners, that's just, that's a lot.
Right, especially when we just went through this exercise where you see the largest factors and how, you know, some can pull it off and not all can. I mean, then some of the...
But are they, are they doing their best work in that, in that environment?
Correct.
How much better of a teacher could they have the potential to be in a, with one, with three fewer kids in the classroom?
Right, it's also possible that someone's best at 30, weirdly. You know, everyone has different things that they're good at, but I would understand the idea that it, right? When you talk about the, the impact of interaction and all those other factors that involve staff, just fundamentally, staff effort and engagement, and you're asking them to engage to a much larger number, there's, there's challenge, you know, puts pressure on that.
And if you add English language learners or kids with social, emotional challenges into all of that, that just increases the effort and the challenges for the, for the teachers.
I have a few concerns as a teacher.
Yay!
Tell us what we got wrong, please.
No, not even about that. I want, thank you for, I do like my research, but we do have to be cognizant, we can find research to say whatever it is that we, you know, to support our views. There are some issues that I have. When we look at our students, and we know that we have a very diverse group of students in our classrooms, and when I think of research done with a bit more homogeneous, you know, students, there's, that's a significant challenge for comparison. So, I'll be interested to see what happens in other settings that are perhaps more similar to us. Looking into the six effect sizes on student achievement, I can see, you know, a lot of, the six are related to professional development, not necessarily tied to funding. So, how do we teach teachers to have high expectations? How do we teach students to self-evaluate their work? And it's really not hard to do, it just has to become part of the culture of the, of the buildings, right? So, you know, our worksheet for writing should have, you know, is it a happy face or a flat face, you know, a sad face in first grade? So, like, it's doable, and, and I think it's really important. The programs tied to child development, that's really more of that professional development and the curriculum development of, what are we going to do to make sure that that ties to that? Conceptual change programs. So, big areas here, response to intervention, that happens to be the last of the six, I think in the environments that we teach, I think that's the most important, because that's where you have your tier one, two, three is intervention for behavior, for academic achievement. And for that, you need to have, teachers need to be able to provide interventions, and that, those are happening in a very small ratios of students, and comes in the, you know, class size, right? I also think that when we think of, I agree that we tell, we told the community, "This is what we're going to do with your, you know, with your tax money. We need to be, you know, be held to what we said." But I also agree that these were not things about having 25 students, these, the classes about 34. So, what I, what I'd like to see us do, this whole average class sizes, to me, I've always had an issue with, and I, I, I'm not an administrator, and I'm probably not asking for something that's really easy, but I want us to, to really look into, just like I want my students, I want everybody to achieve, but we all need different things, and that's the whole concept, definition of equity. So, if we could think about case by case and making sure that in that particular environment, you know, that we are able to facilitate a positive learning environment that may be needed in that particular class. I don't know if that makes sense, without having to be very strict into, but we're following the average, but we're following whatever. I've had classrooms with 28 first graders, I've had 25, I've had 21. I think 24, when I had the 25 and I lost one, that was a good number for me, because I liked my groups of six kids, so if I can have four kids, four groups. So, that worked for me. When I had 28, that meant that I could only see my reading groups twice a week instead of daily, right? So, those are all those things. Now, when you're in the higher grades and you have better classroom management, because to me, the whole class size, I don't really like whole group instruction like ever, so it comes down to me, I have these six kids right now, and they need all my attention, and I don't want to have to worry about the other kids that are supposed to be working independently. Now, granted, there's a lot of routines and procedures you have to teach to accomplish that, but it really has helped when I have an assistant that she actually can work with the group that just left me and continue working on the same thing. Now, that child is having 40 minutes of reading instruction, instead of some whole group that you're going to miss some of the kids because they're not auditory learners and whatnot. So, I just want us to see more into, like, what are the specific needs of the classes, of the grade levels, of the teachers? And chaos does not help anybody. And I think that was the biggest, the bigger, biggest complaint that we've had. And even having two different elementary schools with rooms with the exact same amount of students, but not having the same response, because perhaps the students are different and the teachers are different.
Or the classroom is a different size.
Right. So, I think this is not, it's not easy, but I, but I really think that, I just wanted to make sure that we are mindful that we do have very different students in our rooms. It depends on the teacher, too. I'm very loud. If you're loud, I don't really care, just let me work, right? So, but then you have other teachers that are really not, everything's, you know, complete silence, and that has an impact, too, like the level of chaos that a teacher and the students are able to withstand, so that they can actually learn.
If I could interrupt, Hattie does talk about that. He talks about the capacity of the, basically, what the teacher, there are teachers who actually don't like super-small classes, like, they, they appreciate more students in a class. And there are teachers who want much smaller classes, you know, it's, it's, I don't want to say, I don't want to use the word capacity, because that's not the word that I really mean, but it's, it's just the, what, the environment, when you were talking about the environment that works best for each specific teacher. The other thing that I wanted to clarify really quickly is that he's done studies all over the world. So, he, he's done studies of studies all over the world. He's done urban US studies, he's done rural US studies, studies in Australia, England, Germany, France, everywhere. So, I think he, I think he has captured, he hasn't just captured homogenous groups of students, so I just wanted to make that clarification, but he agrees with what you just said.
Can I ask a question?
Tia?
Oh.
Oh.
It looks like the most effective thing for student achievement is a good teacher. Has there been any research on improvement with a para in the classroom?
I can, I can definitely look into that.
I mean, does a para in the classroom make a difference like Angela said?
Just another body, like another person?
Yeah.
Assisting?
Yeah.
I can, I will definitely look into that. My first inclination is to think of the amount of development, I think. As a teacher, I've had, I've had situations with, we call them EAs in my district, educational assistants, in my classroom where the students didn't know the difference between the teacher and the EA. I mean, that's just how it worked. And then there were EAs that hung out in the back and kind of made me have a question type thing. So I think it's the development of the, it's the development of the adults and the practices of the adults, and that, that does take time. It takes time. And, you know, it takes more than just, hey, you know, do this next time. I mean, it, professional development, right now, even at a federal level, when they're talking about the possibility of cutting, you know, Title II funds for professional development, and that, that's the building of great teachers and great staff in a classroom. But I will definitely try and find some research on, on paraprofessionals.
Yeah, do they make the teachers more effective?
Yeah, I will do that.
I think they can greatly, but I may not find a good one. Yes, and I've had.
And there has to be a good relationship, I would think, between the teacher and the para, like their ability to work together.
I think it has to do with your style. I've had an assistant that I'm like, I cannot work with this guy, but then the other teachers say, no, this is, you know, I really like him, because he, you know, it really depends. But I have, I have right now, is I go, hi, good morning, so you're going to meet with this group, and these are your materials, and then she goes and teaches, because a lot of them have background in education, they may be teacher candidates, they may have had jobs as teachers in other states and have had a hard time getting a license here, and that's why they're doing that work for the moment. But I really think it reinforces what I'm doing if you do have a good one. If you just have one that's sitting on the back and just trying to be, you know.
Read a book.
Yeah, exactly, then, not really. But you can really, you can have really good ones that really support your teaching. When I think of how math instruction, where you have three different levels of what you're doing, so it's like teacher and then support and then independent work, and then that person can help that second group with whatever, whichever doubts the student has after meeting me, or maybe having more time for practice. But that is complex.
My question goes back to the dollars for a moment. And so we have already made the commitment that we are going to reduce class size to students.
Yep.
Across the district. I don't think I have heard what that dollar amount actually costs, and what does that mean then for what is left? And if that is getting ahead to our next meeting where we are going to be getting into this, that's okay, but that, to me, is what gets to the question about how aggressive should we be this year versus going out in future years?
Mr. Holdy, I'll be looking for a little bit of help on that particular dollar figure.
So two teachers are reducing class size across the district by two students is an increase of 10 staff members across the district. So our average teacher count is about, is about $90,000, or just over $95,000, $90,000 with salary and benefits. So that 10 teachers is about $900,000 on the average cost. Now, obviously, new teachers are sometimes hired at a lower rate, but there's no guarantee on what that looks like, and we tend to look at staff across the board.
I guess I said that, because it surprises me that to go down by two students across the district is only an increase of 10 teachers. That was what that reaction was coming from, not the $900,000 part.
Yeah. And what it is, is, I mean, obviously, when we have three sections at a grade level, you know, a reduction of two students gets you into the range versus maybe being above the range, or in some of those situations, we're actually running at a lower rate than what that target ratio is already.
Yeah.
So that's just kind of applying to get into that target ratio across the board for each one of the buildings.
And I think that that's where one of Paula's points that I so agree with comes into play, which is where the average becomes very difficult, because this is not going to potentially be felt by everyone in our community, even though we can say that we made this move and we added 10 staff members. I think actually being able to articulate what this does and how people should expect to experience it is going to matter a lot. And I personally don't feel like I have the language to do that right now, or the financials to also support it. And I know we're getting there, but that's sort of where my head is at the moment.
Right. So we're a couple of things. So we're looking for some guidance on those specific next steps. There's a couple of things with regard to average class size and their practices we have willingly chosen to challenge us. We could easily begin to close sections in turn people away. That would take care of class sizes that were above average. What that would mean is, is that as we got to a certain number, people would no longer be allowed to have the school of their choice. That would obviously most likely have a pretty significantly negative impact on enrollment. That would probably create some challenges across the district, but that would be an option for us to do. What it would mean is, is that we would end up closing sections, closing schools, closing, closing the ability for people to be perhaps in the school of their choice. We've chosen not to do that. We've chosen to try to expand where we can, which creates some of the challenges, which means that a person who wants dual immersion in Spanish or STEM education can have that, and people who want to be in their community school can have that also. From an overall perspective of class sizes, yes, there will be bubbles, there will be areas where we are above the class size, there will be situations where the schedule at secondary isn't perfect, and we have a large section of 36 and a small section of 21 with the same teacher perhaps. So those are things that we're working hard to mitigate. From an overall perspective, as I think about class size and the next step, the reason we focused on primary is the research does show that primary are the areas where academic achievement, you can put in investment, and it creates that long-term improvement. Those are the areas where, again, we can find different research across the board, but we wanted to have an impact across the district, but then looking where it's likely to have the greatest impact on our kids. And then also the area where we are needing the most change to become more competitive, because 24, 25, 26, and kindergarten and first grade tend to be larger than our surrounding districts, and we are out of the norm in those particular areas. Where I'm thinking, or between the things that I've heard and the things that my leadership leads me towards, I like the idea of spending additional referendum funds in kindergarten and first grade. I like the idea of having the flexibility based on community need to add paraprofessionals or class sections, based on input of parents and staff. And I like the idea of, well, continuing to grow our fund balance, and perhaps you all expected me to grow it a little bit faster than point one at a time. I like the idea of spending most, if not all, of the referendum money in this next year, because, well, I recognize that sustainability is a great thing. I tend to believe that while we should grow our fund balance to maintain the stability of our organization, I think we have been very diligent in slowly growing things and being a more stable environment. I would prefer to spend more of those funds or a higher percentage of funds rather than holding back many of those funds. If it were, solely up to me in that vacuum, because I just think we're impacting the students next year, and class sizes are going to be a function of enrollment again on a yearly basis. And if enrollment grows, class size could shrink or grow again, depending on how those bubbles happen in schools, unless we begin to move kids from building to building.
I would just say, I think it's hard for me to answer this question in isolation from the rest of the referendum dollars. I am having a hard time feeling like I can have an informed opinion about spending additional money on class size when I feel like I don't have a sense of the full pot. I'm hearing this is roughly $900,000, but what is that, what does that mean for the rest of the referendum dollars next year? So that is, that is what I am struggling with, because I feel like I, we're talking about one section of the pie and not the full pie in this conversation. And then I think the other thing is, for me, it's not necessarily a fund balance issue, it's spending all of the referendum dollars in the first year of a 10-year commitment, or not spending at all, but I think we've had many conversations in the past about the need to realize what those diminishing returns are going to be over time and to actually plan for them, and what I just heard you say did not sound like that.
Correct. Right. That's the conflict of his personal goals and our, and our.
Yes.
And our responsibility to.
Well said.
You know, and that's fine. I appreciate that he has that, that, but that sustains.
I do have a third point, too, and then I'm going to be done. I think that the other issue about class size is the sophistication and nuance in which we're talking about it, because I think if you had somebody in the audience who was hearing us talk about the cost of reducing all classes by two across the district, they would potentially leave expecting something very different from what it sounds like they should potentially expect of us. And that, to me, is a concern.
So let me go back to that. So our first step was $900,000, reducing class size across the district, which is half the referendum funds already, correct? So we've talked about, so where we've been back and forth with this group is talking about stability. How much are we, what amount then of $1.8 million would talk about stability, or what should be held back? We've looked at prioritization, and we're talking about spending that next set of class size dollars mostly in the areas of kindergarten and first grade. If, for example, we were to put a section of, an added section in three of our four elementary schools in kindergarten and first grade, that's six teachers, paras in the three sections at the other school, that's six paras, that would be the equivalent of eight more teachers or another $700 and some thousand dollars. We are almost at a million eight. I'm worried about a million six and change at that point. So the question, again, coming back to this group, is when we talk about stability, when we talk about long-term holdback, that's the guidance that I need to be able to take that next step to determine how much of that, how much do we really spend, and how much do we then hold back for that inflationary piece to sort of make that last? And just one clarification, even though, well, I will say I would love to spend all of those dollars, I also did preface that by saying, while increasing the fund balance at a larger rate, which is functionally the equivalent of holding some back.
I think how it's described matters a lot.
For clarity's sake, the reduction in two, is that K-12?
That is K-12.
That's K-12.
So high school, middle school, and every elementary with the ratio, the FTEs, classroom size dropped by two from the initial investment.
Paula, you raised a point about professional development, and it might, I mean, that, you know, it's hard to look at that list of six things and think that professional development isn't a critical area of investment, even though it doesn't affect class size, right? But it's, you know, so we, I think we have some things to balance, and we have to balance the public requests or demands, depending on your view of it, for class size. That is, again, not with an eye on, necessarily on, you know, what maximizes achievement, but what maximizes feel and, and they're, and significantly influences their view of, you know, how things are operating, right? So there is, it's important, right? Our customers have a view of how things should be run, and if we're not meeting it, they'll, they'll find someone else who will meet it. But to the extent that we deliver on that, I think we have to be mindful of what, you know, the other part is, what is the best, you know, with our overall mission, what is the best way to maximize our funding for student achievement?
And we also did, you know, promote this referendum, talking about class size.
Oh, we sure did. So, I mean, we have to deliver on it to a certain extent, for sure, and it's, you know, the tension shows up with what Steve had said, is, you know, we could dump the whole thing out in this first year, and when I look at it and look at, you know, the rate at which our costs increase year over year, you know, that portion of the referendum is not tied to any inflationary rate, let alone one that matches, even if it was, it would match our cost inflation year over year. So there's an erosion of our dollars year over year, and that's, you know, we've, unless you are growing by the right number of students year over year, you're always going to run into that in terms of impact on headcount for staffing. That's the unfortunate thing, right? Every dollar that we can't spend, that means someone probably can't be here, so, which no one likes.
So the other thing I heard in what kind of everybody is saying, and also what Paula pointed out, is that we should listen on some level to teacher voice when you ask the teachers in the different schools about kind of what their individual preferences were. I think it's important to listen to that. So I know we've been talking about additional teachers and class size versus paras, so I think that's an important thing for us to remember when we're looking at this. I think that is meaningful, and probably their success is going to be better if we follow their, you know, what they think will be better for their students.
Right. So I feel like I've been given, to synthesize, I feel like I absolutely, I appreciate your restating, I feel like that is the guidance I've been given. The area I'm going to continue to push where I'm feeling a little gray and unable to synthesize to create a proposal for two weeks from now, is that stability concept, is how, if we're, and Mr. Paula's perhaps has a spreadsheet.
Sure, I'll share it.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful.
I'll send it to you, Steve.
But to.
You and Craig can pick it apart.
And to create some guidance on what we think from a dollar perspective is stability. And as we smile, obviously, as you hear, my inclination is to, is to spend at the moment.
Right, right. And really, it boils down to, it boils down to an assessment of risk, in my opinion, because anything we do is assumption, is based on assumptions, and so we, I think we just need to sort of look at the assumptions that are going into Tim's spreadsheet or anything else that we use, and then decide what is our risk tolerance based upon those assumptions. And, you know, I mean, I think you're right, Steve, that if we're, if we're basically making a bet, that's probably a pretty good bet, that following through on this class size reduction is going to help our enrollment, then that's going to mitigate some of that risk.
To a point, I think, if you were to look at Tim's spreadsheet, what he would show you is, is that costs still go up faster than revenue, and students aren't actually a function of that. They help the overall, but regardless, costs go up at a higher speed than, than, than revenue. It's more about, from a student enrollment perspective, it's more about hitting the sweet spot.
Yeah.
Hitting the number of, the right number of students in the right grade and the right sections, so you don't carry a low class and, and high classes. It's having it just come in in that sort of lucky balance.
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
Mm-hmm.
From what you said, my takeaway, so this is where I would like you to correct me if I have it wrong, is that all of the, I heard $1.9 million in additional revenue through the approved referenda for next year would essentially go towards class size then, in sort of the way that you just articulated that to us? Is that accurate or inaccurate?
We are working our way through that.
Okay.
I am looking to see from this group, we've also talked about social emotional behavior supports. We, the, the top priorities we had within the referendum funding had to do with class sizes. I believe there were four pieces. Class sizes, academic and academic behavioral and social emotional supports for students, and then I believe stability. Were kind of those, those three big points at the top, with the social emotional piece also coming out of Reimagine Richfield.
And is the 1.9 million an accurate number?
I want to say 1.8.
Is it roughly 4.50 per student?
Yes, 4.50.
4.50 per ADM or whatever.
Mr. Holdy?
Thanks, Craig. Yeah, so this is one of the pieces. So the actual revenue in the referendum shows up at just over $2 million, but there's a reduction in some of the equalization factors the state gives us that brings our actual new money down to about 1.8 to 1.9 million.
Thank you.
So, and I know we've talked about the social emotional factors, and I would point out, one of the things that Tia mentioned in her presentation was that class size reduction, the number that you gave, the .21, was the same as for relaxation and exercise, which are much less expensive things than a teacher. So I know, like, I did a mindfulness and education seminar last summer, and it was pretty amazing. It was a really neat experience. I think it made a big difference, and it started with a focus on the teachers and then moved to the focus on the students. And then I recall, I don't know how many of you remember Mr. Rudinay, who was a first grade teacher at Sheridan, but I used to volunteer in his class when my daughter was in there, and he would be able to look around the classroom and know when those kids needed a, like, an exercise break, and they'd put on their jackets, they'd walk once around the outside of the building, they'd come back, and everybody. they'd walk once around the outside of the building, they'd come back, and everybody could, would focus. So, I think those are two really good kind of examples of things that we could do that maybe wouldn't cost a lot of money for a teacher.
Anything else other than a spreadsheet of Mr. Paulus's to look at from a stability perspective?
I mean, dress that up, it's...
I know, it's not pretty.
It's probably not pretty.
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, we risk being depressed by those findings, but I think it's worth looking at.
So, like they said in FPAC after this discussion, and everyone was feeling just a little bit down, because it was like, oh, my gosh, we're just gonna keep losing this money, but what a wonderful problem to have, as opposed to previous years in those FPAC meetings when we're talking about where to make cuts. We're trying to figure out where to spend the money that the public is entrusted us with to improve our students' education. Try to shift it to the positive note and don't let it get you down.
There you go.
It's a good thing.
And I think I would repeat that, that we are sitting here wringing our hands over where is the most important place to spend money, and how do we do it in a way that makes sure that we can sustain the things that we build, and trying to put all of our heads together to create that best guidance for our plans. So, all right, thank you. If you all have thoughts on stability, because obviously that's that last piece and where we go with things, I've heard the rest of the things that I feel I need to know to make that next recommendation, but the stability one I'm not quite there yet on. And so, I will be reaching out to board members for those other pieces. If people have thoughts, please feel free to communicate them. With that, Mr. Kling, Corey, welcome.
Okay, I'm going to talk tonight a little bit about survey results and then a technology, or technology plan updates. With the survey, I did send out some preliminary overview results about a month ago, and I wanted to highlight or bring to attention a few of those results. So, when we look at our survey data, it's in two pieces, right, our community data and our staff data. And one of the things that was important to Mr. Janowski this year was that we made sure that we stayed true to the questions that were asked last year and make sure that we had that data to compare from year to year, and that will be the practice going forward. So, real quick, a couple things. Actions that were taken after last year, based on comments and feedback data from last year, '16, '17, the district's staff or leadership defined areas to work on, including building a better climate of trust, collaboration, and teamwork, increasing the climate of respect and support, improving customer service, increasing staff equity training, and improving or addressing class sizes. And then, when we get specific to actions taken based on '16, '17 data and comments, we can further, or go further and say that we launched a memorandum of agreement slash initiative committee to support partnership leadership with Education Richfield, expanded opportunities for formal and informal feedback between administrators and staff, provided communications and leadership training to a wide variety, or a wide range of building and district administrators, and trained all administrators in innocent classroom and ongoing equity leadership. So, some concrete things or actions that were taken. Now, actions taken, further actions taken based on that data and comments, set up structures to train all teachers in innocent classroom by the end of '18, '19. So, you see that we have administration, and then we have a plan going forward on how to address teachers as well. Launching budget info sessions, excuse me, with every staff and PTO, training unlicensed staff in customer service, and introduction to innocent classroom principals, so that those are aligned across staff groups, and launched referendum to decrease class sizes in '18, '19, which we've been talking about here a few minutes ago.
So, let's take a pause for a second. So, I just wanna point that out. So, one of the things that's important that we often talk about is we do our surveys, and we wanna really make sure that we're focusing on reporting back to the community some of the things that we're doing in regard to how do we address things based on the feedback and the comments that we have. And so, we wanted to be very clear about, we had some feedback in '16, '17 about things to focus on. Those are the areas that we targeted, and here's a set of the actions that we took to try to address some of those things.
Right, and so I'll go through a little bit of data here first, focusing on community. These are some highlights, and then focusing on staff feedback, okay? First of all, '17, '18, overall community satisfaction. So, when we look at community data in this year's survey, overall, we had a negative feedback or negative feedback points of 12 percent, neutral or no opinion, not applicable, of 28 percent, and a plus or positive satisfaction number of 60 percent. And then, those are broken into smaller groups, which are outlined in these subsets of data. Okay? Community feedback results having to do with areas of relative strength. So, when we look at this data, what were our areas of relative strength? Student connections with teachers was high, teacher preparedness was high. Areas with opportunities for growth, we singled out that RPS of the district is promoted in a positive manner, extracurricular satisfaction, and there was a question on the survey about that, in terms of conference, and educating community on offerings of community education. So, the opportunity to better and further educate community on offerings of community education was identified as an area of growth. And then, when we get into the more specific data sets, I wanna just highlight a couple of things here in terms of when you group together positives and negatives. So, as you can see with the data, we have strongly disagree, disagree would be considered negatives. Neutral and not applicable, or applicable would be grouped together in that neutral zone, and then agree and strongly agree would be in the positive range. So, when we look at that, these groups of people here, when we put them collectively together, that they're positively promoting the district, we saw a growth from last year. We had a 5 percent decrease in negative numbers last year and a 3 percent increase in positive numbers in this data set. So, when you combine it all together, that's what the data will show.
Excuse me, Corey?
Yes.
Is that the same cohort of 280-odd people asked about each of these different, like, asked about the admin, business team, operations team?
Yes, it's the same people, yes.
So, it's the same people. So, it's possible that someone who said strongly agree, said strongly agree across the board?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yeah, it's a matrix of choices that you could choose from.
Thank you.
Okay, then when we talk, an environment of trust, collaboration, and teamwork, we had a 17 percent decrease in negative feedback from last year and a 4 percent increase in positive. Jumping ahead to culture of high expectations, or promoting or helping create a culture of high expectations, the feedback there came back as a 10 percent decrease, excuse me, in negatives and a 2 percent growth in positives. Moving down to a shared purpose or creating a shared purpose for improving school performance and effectiveness, there was an 8 percent decrease in negatives there and a 2 percent growth in positives. And of course, all of these numbers are rounded. So, moving on to supporting quality professional development opportunities and the role that these groups play in that, there was a 9 percent decrease in negatives and a 9 percent growth in positives. And again, important to this data is understanding the role of the neutral numbers, those two different neutral numbers, and how they, how they affect the data, and how you might have 8 percent decrease and 2 percent positive, or 9 percent and 9 percent because of those neutral and not applicable numbers. And finally, this one was something that we were really excited about when we saw these numbers come through, and that is that staff feels respected and supported. We had a 21 percent decrease in negatives here and a 13 percent increase in positives. So, a really, really positive piece of data. So, a couple things as takeaways, and then I can kind of chunk this out and take some questions here before I jump into the other part. Staff feedback results, kind of areas of relative strength. To summarize, staff is feeling respected and supported, and the environment of trust, collaboration, and teamwork was a high data point. And when we identify areas for continued growth, it's important to note that we did see positive change in all of these areas, but where we would say that there was a less of an increase in positive growth would be in positive promotion of the district and a shared purpose for improving school performance and effectiveness. And when the data did come out, we had a significant, a very significant increase in number of people that took this survey in both of the staff groups and the community groups. So, that's an important piece of data as well. So, I could take questions on the survey results. The second half of this won't take very long, but I think it would behoove us to break the two parts, or things apart. So, any questions on that, the survey, survey data, excuse me, that I can answer?
Could you just clarify, who is in the bucket of admin versus business team versus operations team?
Sure. And...
So, when they're being, you know, rated by the staff, for example?
Yeah.
So...
Go ahead.
Okay, so admin is building administrators, principals, and assistant principals. The business team is, and I'm just double-checking, business team is HR and finance. Operations is building grounds and transportation. Teaching and learning is...
Operations is also nutrition.
Say that again?
Nutrition.
Nutrition is in operations also. Teaching and learning is special ed and all of the teaching and learning people at the district level, teachers or staff, or teachers in the building, superintendents.
And this, is this staff that responded to this, is this all staff who voluntarily responded, or is this all licensed staff, or does it include, so it's all staff members who responded across our whole, okay, thank you?
Correct.
All right. Do we have a sense, what our, I mean, if I'm recalling correctly, I think our parent participation rate was in the 600s, was the parent community number?
Yeah, it was over 600.
Over 600, which is great. And then, our staff participation rate, do we have that, do we have a rough idea?
Over 200.
Over 200?
Yes, at least 287, because that's...
Yeah. How does that roughly kind of come out in terms of as a percentage of?
It's about 40 to 45 percent of our staff.
45 percent of the staff?
About 600 to 60.
Okay.
So, about 40 percent of the staff, 30 to 40.
Yep.
How does that compare to other years? Does that feel low to me, just thinking about how accurate of a representation that is?
It's higher, and there was a concerted effort by the administrative team or the management team to give their staff time to fill these surveys out as well.
And I think I've had offline conversations with some building admin, and I think that there are thoughts about ways that they can work on continuing to expand that response rate.
Yeah, because I always worry about whose voices are not reflected.
Right.
And so, I am glad to hear about that, and want to celebrate the, I mean, those are some really significant increases in the span of one year.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way that we have some sense of representative, is it a representative sample, is by, and we could potentially look at this, you know, we would characterize the makeup of sample respondents by various demographic characteristics in terms of what building they come from or what grade level. You know, you could come up with any number of characterizations and then could see how representative that is of our whole population. So, anyway, things that we could potentially look at if we wanna understand these numbers.
And I had, it's more of a process question, and I think actually just checking my own memory, because I appreciate the consistency in questions over the years, because I think that is where we are going to get really good, important insights. My memory was that the timing of this was quite a bit different last year, though, especially the community survey. I thought that went out in maybe May of last year, but this year went out actually several months earlier. Can you say more about the difference?
Yes, we've typically done February, March in terms of our survey. Last year, Mr. Paternas was tasked, and we tasked him with aligning, I think, three different surveys into one. So, there was a technology survey, there was a community survey, there was a staff survey, and there was one other survey. So, to try to realign that into one, he ended up getting it out later coming in the year than previously.
Okay. I think keeping to a consistent timeframe now that we've got this set is also really important.
Having that expectation that it's coming.
Yeah, we've tried to do it around conferences, which helps to get the additional supports.
Okay. Okay, so I will press on to the second half of my presentation, and let me spin ahead here. One of the things that I wanted to really kind of brief you on were just the updates. And I know last year, looking back at the notes, it was roughly this time that Anthony, that Mr. Paternas briefed the board on the digital learning plan, and so I wanted to provide an update, because there have been some changes. Okay, first of all, under, I have written or authored a white paper report that I will eventually publish on closing the digital divide. One of the key things here, and this is based on Stanford research, on the effect of lack of access on student populations compared, when you compare surrounding areas, when you compare ethnicity, and other data points. So, really, it is, it's a, it's a study looking at what that, what effect that has on student populations when they don't have access to the internet and to actual hardware and software offerings, okay? And so, with that, and with the spirit of that report and the research there, I have a slightly revised plan from what was laid out in the past. And so, looking at really this as a civil rights issue in terms of access to resources for our students, okay? And so, with that, for next year, when we look at action steps that are in the minutes, what I want to accomplish and what we can accomplish through TechLovey dollars are the following points. First of all, in terms of device access, I would like to accelerate the one-to-one program or access, meaning one device per one student, to be next year for our 912 students as well as our 68 students. Originally, in the plan, it was 68 only, and then increasing carts at the high school. Now, when you look at the cart numbers at the high school, currently, we almost have enough, we have almost enough carted Chromebooks out there where we have two or one device for every two students. And so, it's not a quantum leap or a giant set of devices to roll out to make that happen. And so, that is one of the key pieces there that's different. Getting to a two-to-one or two students to one device at the K-5 environment, and looking at what the best device is for that, and I'm doing some of that work through committees, and looking at the devices, and that's some of the things we'll be doing here this spring, in terms of what is the best device for that learning environment and the software that we want to roll out in that learning environment. And then, a four-to-one roughly early childhood deployment, meaning basically getting out a small set of devices for early childhood classrooms, small amount of screen time, and real focused on a couple of content areas as a means by which to provide an opportunity for those teachers to run centers or small group activities. And then, a big part of this as well is lab updates. So, when I say lab updates, a huge piece of our current environment is the amount of per-unit cost that it incurs on a district to replace a PC workstation. So, meaning an actual personal computer screen or even laptop compared to that of a more, is almost considered in educational technology as a disposable device, that of a tablet or a Chromebook at this point. And so, really, it's looking at where do we, what do we need in terms of our programming to meet our curricular needs, and then, what do we need in terms of an access piece so that our students have the ability to access digital resources and so on. And that looks a little bit differently based, give you a concrete example, in the computer-assisted drafting or CAD programs, you need a certain device that can handle that, that curricular load or that instructional load in terms of what that device can do for that class, and a Chromebook can't meet that. So, you need, we need to make sure that we provide that PC for that classroom environment, okay? So, the lab update piece is a little bit of downsizing. It's actually fairly significant downsizing of PC labs, because we're increasing classroom embedded and one-to-one devices, okay? Internet access, then, is the other piece of this. I'm currently looking at some of the survey data and wanna pursue a more thorough study of home access. One of the things that, if we go back to what was asked of the survey and who answers the survey, is we look at roughly 90 percent of our families have internet access at home. Well, that's... at home. Well, that's ninety percent of the people that answer the survey. Okay, so the reality is that number is, is probably lower. And so I want to roll out a couple of things. One of the things would be wireless hotspots available for checkout from RMS. These are filtered hotspot devices, 4G LTE on the Verizon network, but they're heavily filtered to meet SIPA compliance, meaning the computer internet protection, or child internet protection act, excuse me. And so making sure that those hotspots that go home for students of need that don't have access, then are SIPA compliant and that our students could check those out. I would figure out if that's a daily or a weekly or whatever that might look like. And we have a partner for that, Verizon and Kajit. And then a partnership with a, to be later announced vendor. I know we current, in the past have had, from what I've dug up, some, some conversations with Xfinity or Comcast, but a vendor that could offer affordable home internet access too for families here in the district that they could purchase into at a rate that's more affordable and less cost prohibitive for families. So two pieces, devices or hardware slash software compared to internet access and increasing our student access in that way. So then, real quick, stakeholder education is another big piece of this. So when we look at the Hattie research, and when you look at professional development research, and you look at, there's project, there is a, Project RED is a set of research on, on computer deployment to schools and what works and what doesn't. It's a project put, put on by the One-One Institute. It's a study of now two thousand school districts around the country in terms of what works and what doesn't. If you look at that research, of course, aligned with all the other research that I mentioned there before, it's really professional development is the key component, whether or not staff knows how to use these devices. So it's not just about getting the technology out, it's making sure that staff, what Project RED would call it, would be that we have first order changes in a district, and that's hiring capable staff and some of those things that you can, you can handle at a first order level. And then second order changes are more transformative things, differentiation, personalization, et cetera, and making sure that staff has the skills to be able to do those types of activities. So stakeholder education isn't, so our education in terms of technology can't just be about educating our students. Okay? It also has to be about educating parents and partnering with community ed to like a summer learning night about internet safety and creating that as a theme, like something that could be reproduced, where we're doing these parent nights, one night the theme would be internet safety, and we can carry those out over time. And so Carol and I have talked about that in terms of community ed. Rollout nights will involve education, so that means at our sites where we are going to have one-to-one, and I'm also looking at our sites where we're going to have two-to-one, just having some sort of education. At elementary, I haven't decided whether or not that's our first conference night as an opportunity to slow play that going into the beginning of next year, meaning maybe we don't hand out these additional devices until we have a chance to kind of test that environment out a little bit, to talk to parents about it at our first conference night and so on. Whereas at the secondary level, we can do that education that we need to or part of that educational piece for parents at that rollout night. And if you jump over to student learning, actually related to that, one of the things that I would like to do too is take the devices out of that rollout night. So let's not hand out devices at that night, let's hand out devices when the kids get to school on day one. And that's an opportunity then to get that, the people and the manpower that worked on that progress, project, to get involved in the education on that rollout, rollout night. Back to parent learning, district website, learning opportunities. Spartan Online is a project that I'm looking at where we could, we could have resources available for stakeholder groups, staff, parents, staff, students, as well as other groups that they could access anytime, anywhere. And then quarterly digital newsletters. I've had some success in past districts with really just getting out those quarterly newsletters to families to provide them with information. As we know, technology is moving extremely rapidly and trying to help our families stay up with that. Staff learning, an August learning event, planning for early August, two-day event where we're going to be providing choice professional development for people to come in, a phase-in model at the elementary, so giving us time to roll that out. Secondary is going to have to be accelerated a little bit more. Quarterly PD offerings on site, so I'm looking at our, our tech stipend recipients that are at schools, making sure that they're involved in PD quarterly at their sites for helping us meet those needs. Anytime, anywhere learning on Spartan Online that I brought up, and I've been learning all about the way in which we do professional learning and we provide accreditation for our staff members, and I'll continue to learn on that, that'll help me in that process. Bi-weekly newsletters for staff, this is, will come out as a, just keeping them up to date on what's going on. They can read it if they want, hopefully they will, but they don't necessarily have to. An example would be Gmail. If, I don't, this is a system-wide thing, Gmail is about to undergo a huge facelift, and that's something that will affect everybody. So how are we getting that messaging out? Student learning, and then finally, learning before device handout at rollout night, devices not handed out until day one of school and completion of learning. Our one-to-one students, I feel like should go through a little bit of learning before they get their device, what that looks like. There are districts around that we can model from, and that this is not, we wouldn't be in isolation. Basically, do you have some base, base-level digital citizenship and digital literacy training before you get that device? And then ongoing embedded learning approach for our teachers, meaning that the learning is happening at their site, they don't have to go somewhere else, making sure that that, that they have opportunities for not only the embedded approach, but then access to some of the other ways in which they can get learning, anytime, anywhere. And then finally, just a couple of quick hows and a how and a why. A revised purchase plan that I mentioned before, reallocate, and what that revised purchasing plan basically takes advantage of is lease pricing. So whereas Mr. Paterness had a more purchase approach, mine will, will take advantage of lease pricing, and then those leases rolling over to get new devices in. One of the things about current lease products is that they allow you to be able to bring in new products and then actually get credited back from the company when you turn that three- to four-year-old device back in, because they refurbish and put those out or sell those to other people. So that's a piece of that. So well, our kids will have more up-to-date technology in that way. Reallocation of existing resources and computer lab reductions, and increased emphasis on supportive software and learning opportunities. So some of the, as we roll out new curriculum, what are our supportive softwares? How do we make sure we budget for that? And how do we make sure that all of that is aligned and not siloed from each other? And then finally, why? The report will be coming out soon, and I put out an action plan in the board minutes for you guys, but really, what is the research behind technology integration and how do we do it right? The need to upgrade technology for new and updated classroom spaces, so as our buildings improve, our technology is going to improve. And if you do any of these building tours, you'll see that, that it's a, you know, it's, you don't have the new spaces with tube TVs, for example. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a conscious effort to make sure that the, the displays are portable and movable, and the furniture is portable and movable, and people know how to use them. Industry standards in college and career readiness, so as we roll out some of these new STEM and STEAM opportunities, making sure we have the tools to pull it off in the technology realm. The staff and students are ready and, and really enthusiastically seeking out more tools and resources for their class, and they need to provide tools to parents for navigating the digital world. And if you look at some of these, for example, there's a gentleman who does a lot of work, his name is Josh Oaks, on helping parents or educating parents about social media. Now, he puts out a periodical, a weekly list of new social media applications coming out. And there's, there's more than one, there are many every week, new ones that come out. And what that means for staff, now, whether or not we can get it to that grandeur level, the point being that the further behind we get is the further behind we get in trying to stay ahead of some of those things for families. So that is the revised plan. I could take some questions on that if you'd like. There's also detailed bullet points in that plan that was in the minutes.
So you mentioned leasing.
Yeah.
So the first thing that comes to my mind on that is interest?
Yes.
Are we paying interest if we're leasing? Because that's one of the reasons that we really wanted to utilize purchasing versus leasing.
A small amount of leasing, we'll have to be cognizant of interest rates. Now, one of the things, of course, as the Fed ratchets, ratchets up interest rates, that will have more of an effect. Now, there are educational lease pricings, so there are costs, there are, I don't know how to best put this, it's like, I'm trying to think of rent control, there we go. There are cost controls in place for educational leasing that are, that make it differ from that federal interest rate. So basically, we can get a very low lease rate through multiple different lenders.
At some point, I'd be interested in just hearing the, the essential cost difference on that.
Yeah, I think that's something definitely we could dig, like, I can, I could propose or could share with our next round, and I could get you guys that in between now and our next meeting in terms of what some of those lease, because I am just now collecting those RFQs from different vendors in terms of what that cost, or what that, the cost will look like for that lease pricing. So one of the things too with leasing, though, like I had mentioned, you spend a little more on that because of interest rates, but they credit you money back because you return that device to them when you're done, so much like you're leasing a car.
What is the typical lease time period?
Three to four years.
Three to four years. So if it's three years, by year three, you're not saving anything. I mean, so, right? Because you're paying for this year's, last year's, and the two, right? You're paying-
Right. You're paying that-
So this is, this is ease of entry?
Yeah.
To change it in year one and two, we're spending less in these years, but eventually we're in the same spot that we would be if we, if we purchased, right? And we're paying the full amount plus a little more yet.
Ease of entry will get us, because of the way that the cost structure, the technology levy is, it gets us, we're currently carrying some leases from past computer cycles that are expiring the next couple of years. So as those expire, is the ease of entry into the one-to-one and transitioning from a fixed computer lab model that was very expensive, as we transition off that and pay off those, those leases, it creates much more budgetary space to be able to then, four years from now, when we have to refresh or start a new cycle at the K five level, where we have off-years because those devices don't leave the class, and secondary level where there, you have to start a new lease cycle in sixth and ninth grade. Basically, it will provide the budgetary space for us to be able to do that after fiscal year 2022. So that, there's a very similar, there's a document in the board minutes from last year about what that lease pricing, or what that purchasing pricing looked like. Once I iron out a per-device lease amount, I'll put that out for publication so you guys can see that. And I had shared that out to a working document to members of our DTAC team, but that's not quite ready to be finalized and published. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Good.
So a couple of other things I thought, have thought about, really making sure, I mean, you're talking about rolling out one-to-one sooner, so making sure that our focus is still on curriculum and that you, we're using the technology as a tool rather than for the sake of having one-to-one technology and saying we have it? Because I think there were reasons why we were kind of transitioning into that.
Yeah.
One of which I think is really important is the staff training, so that when the students have these and before the students have these, that the staff knows, you know, really well knows how to utilize them, so they aren't, you know, just being used as, you know, to type papers instead they're actually being used.
Digital worksheets.
Right?
Yeah.
And then the other thing, I know we've already talked about this, but I didn't see anything in there about like internet hygiene, so educating students and parents about, you know, some control over the amount of time spent in front of a screen.
Yeah.
For all, really, for all grade levels. Because I feel like it's, and sometimes even with my own kids, it feels a little out of control, so.
Balance. Yeah, that life balance, very much so.
We're making sure that we teach parents about that, too.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Agreed. One of the things that, to your first point, yeah, there are a couple of different means by which the professional development that I look at attacking that from. And like I said, one of the biggest things is multiple modalities and addressing the fact that we talk about different learning styles for our students, and our adults also have different learning styles, and making sure we're providing learning opportunities that meet those different modalities, in person as well as, you know, some people will go watch a YouTube video and they'll learn it. Other people want that, you know, step-by-step, in-person approach. So I appreciate that feedback.
And I know we've often utilized, you know, like, super-users in different situations, so people that, the early adopters of different, unique types of technology as people that kind of help guide. So I don't know how much we have of that at the high school at this point, especially when you're talking one, one-to-one.
Yeah. Yeah, and also creating opportunities for, yes, not only this feeding the eagles, as a colleague of mine used to say, but not only feeding the eagles, but also providing opportunities for effective teachers to watch other effective teachers, you know, in their craft and in terms of that technology integration as well. So, yes, all good things and all things that need to happen, yes. So one of the key things that I just want to make sure that, that, I mean, that increased and more rapid access is a piece that is accompanied and not in a silo in and of itself. It also accompanies the fact that it goes along with the rapid changes in our district that are coming up, and will also have to help prepare our teachers for that new, the new classroom space and new, you know, and demands in terms of flexible furniture and more movable modular pieces in our classrooms and so on as well, so that'll be a part of that as well.
I have two things.
Yeah.
One, correct me if I'm wrong, is this your first time presenting to us since you started?
It is my first time.
That's what I thought, so I just wanted to say welcome.
Yes.
And we're really excited that you're with us.
Thank you.
So thank you for all of this. Thanks for coming to Richfield and the, you know, the survey work that you did to just make this available to us this evening as well as this presentation. Very helpful.
Well done. Thank you. Thanks.
And the thing that I was going to ask, this is, this is an area that is not as sort of comfortable or natural for me to sort of understand, how do we see impact and how do we measure success on this? So I would just love to hear your, your philosophy on that.
Well, one of the things, and I'll lean, and I try to always lean on the research, but I would say the research is, is twofold. One of the, especially when we look at the comprehensive Project RED research that I, that ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education, kind of the class group in terms of, of what works in, in, in technology integration, as well as this Project RED group that they partnered with, their research showed, again, first order and second order changes. So what works best is you first have to provide, it's painful and it's ugly and messy at times, but you provide the resources for the teachers and students to feel the reality of technology being available. At first, it has to work, and, and the incredible work was done here in terms of building up infrastructure. So we feel good about the density of our infrastructure. Then we put the proper tools in our student hands that, that they can utilize to do some of the core instructional goals that we have in mind for our staff. So one of these things is looking at our teacher evaluation and making sure that our technology integration and adoption is aligned to our teacher evaluation model, our Danielson rubric, you know, making sure that, that we are aligned there in terms of how the, for example, formative assessments and summative assessment opportunities of a device that can quickly get that data that you can use to inform instruction. So first order adoption changes, meaning that we provide the tools and the staff to be able to pull it off. And then second order gets into our, how are we transforming learning period? You know, our, how do we, how do we move from being a teacher or a leader to a facilitator? You know, the direct instructor to a facilitator of learning. And so that goes with our, the questions that our core planning groups are, are having in terms of how do we design our learning spaces. So for me, philosophically, it's about getting, as you saw here, and one of the things that I said in my interview was, in terms of my core values, is access, you know, getting access to, and really setting these high expectations that the research say that we should ask of any of our student populations. Set high expectations for students and staff, give them the tools that they need to have success, set them up for success with quality training, and then, yeah, move out of the way, much like we would want our teachers to provide their students with the materials and the, and the abilities to be able to be successful and move out of the way. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There's actually a couple of areas of Cory's presentation that I want to focus on that excite me. One has to do with our overall work on equity and the focus of technology on equity and equity of access, beginning to look for expanded partnerships to give, to ensure that our families have access outside of school, but also making sure that we do get our technology into hands of our students. And while it is a slightly moved forward timeline, it's actually not significantly different than the timeline of rollout that we were looking at before, just a little bit moving it forward as we have seen things gain traction. So I'm excited about some of the equity that I'm seeing in the technology work as we take those next steps. The other piece I'm also excited about is I'm thinking about some of the things, looking at some digital newsletters and some new communication methodologies. You know, as I pair that with the earlier part of this, of the presentation from, from Cory about our survey, you know, you look at both staff and community feedback, which I'm just going to take a moment, and I'm going to grin, and I'm going to smile, and I'm going to look over at Cory, and I'm going to say, so Cory, as I- over at Cory and I'm going to say, so Cory, as I look at that data, in every single category, areas where we were perceived negatively reduced, we had fewer people saying they had a negative perspective of our schools in every area, community and staff, and there was an increase in every single area for positive feedback of our schools, so I'm really excited by the comprehensive work of the adults of our organization to do that, and so I'm very pleased at the work of everyone within the organization and glad you were able to report that, and then I'm excited because as I look at community and staff also saying that an opportunity for growth is in our communication as we positively promote our district, seeing some of the things you're already building into technology seems like a very seamless way to put together, survey our outstanding growth along with our areas of continued need and some of the things in technology that are going to help us with that. So thank you for the great news, and thank you for the work that also aligns to both equity and the needs of our district.
Thank you.
And thank you for sharing all the data.
You're welcome.
With the comments, so everybody know that the board received those and we read them, thank you.
Good, you're welcome. Okay.
Thank you.
Hold on.
Okay, so we move on to commendations.
Commendations.
At 9:27.
At 9:27, so the district art team hosted the Second Annual Empty Bowls Fundraiser on April 5th, 2018. Student, staff, and volunteers put on a great event using the talents of our art department and our student artists. Well-attended event raised nearly $2,200, with the proceeds going to benefit our Spartan Food Shelf, so thank you to the generosity of our art team and our student, staff, and volunteers. Then, very exciting, just this past week, current and incoming officers of the Richfield High School chapter of the National Honor Society welcomed 26 high school students into the Honor Society on April 11th. Congratulations to these students. David Aguilar, Jalen Carlisle, Taylor Eckerman, Isabella Fersky, Madeline Gibbs, Corina Hartman, Morella Hernandez-Ariano, Hannah Hintermeister, Anna Howard, Samantha Jutter, Johanna Lindvall, Carlos Lopez Hernandez, Clara Liebeck, Alexandra Medveck, Catherine Melson, Ava Noack, Isabella Grady, Luke Ott, Mary Jane Palmer, Alexander Perez, Joel Pojatos, Vashti Sanichara, Jalaina Smith-Moore, Ella Sali, Tenzantashi, and Samuel Verbrugge. Congratulations to our Honor Society new students.
That's awesome. So we will now move on to the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda as presented.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Pauls, a second by Mr. Tensing, is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the consent agenda passes. So we will move to old business and board policy review, starting with policy 505, student disability non-discrimination.
All right, so we are having a second review of this policy, the MSBA redline policy is also there, and so the other thing that we were asked to do was take a look at some of the other districts' student disability non-discrimination policy. Most districts we found are using the MSBBA policy pretty much as-is or with minor changes. One of the conversations we had at the last board meeting was around specificity, so we wanted to provide some of that background. So you also see Minneapolis's policy, and that was the one that we could find with more specificity. I'm actually not moving this policy forward at this time, this is for another read, we actually have a group of counselors and Dr. Clarkson working together to update Section 504 and also this particular policy, which is, I believe, 505.
And that will include the language changes that were raised last time, right?
Yes, yes, and so the group is working on language changes and then also working on what is needed in regard to Policy 505.
What would be great would be that, if you look at Minneapolis's and you feel like that's of specificity or if you want more specificity.
All right, so I don't need to go further into 505 at this time, but if people could take a look, could take a look at the Minneapolis policy, one of the conversations we did have was around questions around more specificity, so that is in Minneapolis's, but that was not in many of the other districts we found, so as you look at that and reflect, if you'd like to give us some additional feedback, doesn't have to happen today, but around the level of specificity we would be looking at to work for Richfield Public Schools.
Okay, so we will move on to Policy 783 and 783.1, video surveillance.
All right, so we were asked specifically to examine this policy in the guidelines in regard to are we actually implementing each of the areas of this policy and then what legally should we be doing? We are using video surveillance appropriately, it's in hallways, it is not obviously in bathrooms or anywhere that would be inappropriate, clearly outlined by this policy. One area that we do not currently have, we are, we have found that it is not legally required, but we're looking for some guidance in this regard, is in regard to signage, signage in regard to video surveillance, and so according to this policy, which I can say is not in the guideline fully implemented, is we don't necessarily have signs throughout the district sharing where and when video surveillance may or may not be happening, and so I wanted to get a little bit of feedback from the board in regard to perspectives on signage. Beyond that, the video recording pieces are occurring according to policy and we have been, been working in those ways. So any thoughts in regard to signage?
Well, it says in the guideline that we have signage.
So we do have signage, yes.
Just whether it's everywhere that recorded.
Whether it's everywhere that is recommended, I just don't recall where, for example, it's a sign that should be placed at entry to parking lots, and I don't recall seeing it.
So we do not have an entry to parking lots, correct. The question for the group would be, should we have, is there a perspective on, and I'll use the exact words, conspicuously place signs notifying riders that their conversations and or actions may be recorded on tape, also placed at the entry to parking lots and building entry doors pertaining to possible video surveillance of buildings, grounds, and parking lots. So for us to fully comprehensively do this, that would actually mean that parking lots would have them on them, school buildings with, like the high school where we do have video in our hallways, that means every entry door theoretically should have a sign, or not, and so the question then becomes, and again, from a legal perspective, that's not necessarily required, I would say from a warm welcoming environment perspective, that's not necessarily recommended.
Sure.
And so the question then has to do with the board about what, are there thoughts in regard to, or guidance in regard to level of description or what that, what that looks like from an interpretation perspective?
I guess I would say if it's not legally required, and it's, is it common practice? I would ask if, if we could pin down what do peers do, but if it's not legally required and it's not necessarily welcoming or makes people uncomfortable or gives, why would we signal that we're doing it if it's, if it's largely and significantly for security reasons?
I wonder, I guess the one thing I wonder, and I don't know where the balance is on this, is where is the balance between, I mean, I get, I get the welcoming, warm welcoming environment piece, there could be an argument that having notice of video surveillance could accomplish two pieces, one would be, you know, that there's the potential that a bad actor might say, hmm, maybe I'm not going to do that, right, may deter.
Sure.
The other piece would potentially be, and I guess different people are going to respond differently to this, you know, the notion that, okay, well, this, this district takes their security seriously, does that enhance any feeling of safety? I mean, I guess, I don't know.
It's like the sticker on my door that says I have an alarm.
That's right, that's right.
I just need the sticker.
It's like the neighborhood watch, yeah, so I don't know, I don't know where that plays.
Well, like Steve said, we do have signage.
We do, okay, it's just not everywhere that's stated within here.
Yeah.
So if we wanted to go forth with this as, as the guideline, we'd have to put up a whole lot more signs.
Exactly.
Do we have them on each bus?
Mr. Holsey?
You know, I mean. We don't have video on every bus, so we're in the process of implementing that across the whole fleet.
Right, I mean, I don't imagine this gets into the fine print, it would just have to say video surveillance in use.
My guess is when this was put in, it was before cameras were at every place you go, in every shopping mall, in every street corner, in every place, so at that point it probably was more of a deterrent, but now that everybody has cameras all over the place, I think it's a different standard, and then it changes what's the intent of, you know, just that signage now all of a sudden shows a little differently than what did 20 years ago, so.
I would, I would be comfortable with changing the shells in that clause to maze, so that it is an option, and I trust the discretion of the administration about when they should be placed, but I do not, I don't think that we should require ourselves to do that for all the reasons that have been named.
Right, right, for example, to the point Steve had made, do we have to have one at literally every entryway, including the ones that aren't commonly in use?
Yeah.
It's, it's just signage and maintenance and to what end?
Yeah.
So if that is the recommendation.
I'm in agreement with Crystal.
And then looking at, are you having thoughts?
I think from a pragmatic standpoint, I am in agreement.
Okay.
The spirit, I think the spirit of the, of the, the spirit of the guideline and the spirit of the policy would indicate that we're not surveilling our, we're not surveilling without reasonable notice, I guess is the way I would sort of see that. So what does reasonable notice mean? I may be open to some interpretation, but I think that's, I think I would be comfortable with that.
Where do you see the reasonable notice?
Well, for instance, so, so we're talking about, you know, first of, do we post signage? I mean, as we are thinking about our redesign of our buildings and sort of best practices from a secure access perspective, basically you're talking about a single access point to a building, right? So it would make sense to me that that would be a location where, where it would be reasonable to communicate that expectation. Does that mean every single entrance, no? So I would be, I guess that I would be perfectly willing to hear feedback in terms of what makes sense in the context of sort of best practice around securing schools in the 21st century, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind more feedback from what others do.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will not move immediately from shell to maze, and then we will, we'll look at that and then we will take a look at what others do in terms of signage, and whether or not that becomes a policy, we will certainly use that to educate the conversation as we move the policy hopefully at our next meeting.
Okay, so we will move on to Policy 977, 977.1 and 0.2, cooperation with law enforcement agencies.
All right, so we took into account feedback, taking a look at general information, 977, that we do cooperate and partner with law enforcement, we took some feedback at the last meeting about some of that guidance, that the principal would be perhaps in a very challenging position at times, so we added the language prior to making the decision about whether or not law enforcement should be allowed. The principal or designated will consult the superintendent, assistant superintendent, or chief human resources administrative officer, so that then has more than one person putting their eyes on that and having a voice into that conversation. We also added some clarity that a reasonable attempt to contact a parent shall both include the telephone and email, and so there are both technology-based and, and phone-based efforts, and then within guideline 977-2, there was some question about the clarity of risk levels, we also wanted to just repeat something stated earlier, that risk levels, because risk level two was sort of questioned about its clarity, moderate risk of reoffense was as assigned and defined, and those are the specific definitions of the Minnesota Department of Corrections experts, and so that's how we got risk level one, two, and three in guidelines 977-2. Looks like we also added, because then there was some concern about the fact sheet and how that decision is made, and so we also added that on line 35 in section 977, page three, line 34, this decision will be made in consultation with the district's legal counsel, just to sort of clarify that we will check to make sure that if we are doing some form of communication, that we're protecting legal rights in regard to that communication. Questions or feedback on 977 and the accompanying guidelines?
You know, not, 977.2, last time I pointed out that the number was repeated, now we're omitting number three, we go one, two, four, five.
No, we messed up.
If that's, if that's the only point of clarification, I would, I would allow it to be changed.
Should be three, four.
Without my, I mean, that's if you like to follow the usual convention, some people don't, but you know, it's fine. So anyway, I don't know, I like the clarifications that were made clarifying that, you know, these, these classifications were not, are not the creation of this district, that the, the decision will be made in consultation with legal counsel, we don't want us, you know, we don't want one person having to do this in isolation to make that decision, given that the outcomes could be terrible, so. I like the changes.
I'm happy with the changes that are made, I think it adds some clarity and I think it adds some support frankly for the people needing to make those decisions.
Yeah, I agree. I'd be happy to move 977, 97.
I couldn't say it.
I'd be happy to move the, the policy and guidelines one and two.
I will second the motion.
Inclusive of the erroneous numbering.
If we will change it to three, four, I'll allow it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Pauls, a second by Mr. Tensing, any further discussion?
Yes, because I was, I was going, so as, you know, I know two of you weren't here at the last meeting, but I voiced my, my struggle with 977.1 and appreciate the changes that were made and still find myself uneasy, and so had a conversation with Steve about it earlier today, which was helpful, and I think what I'm trying to balance is, you know, the effect of having students potentially be questioned on our, our watch, if you will, in our buildings about non-school-related things and sort of the risk that that presents and the dynamic that that presents, while also realizing, you know, that, that could actually feel like a safer environment than being taken to police headquarters and being questioned there, so I, I'm sort of struggling with that. But one of the things that I did was look at some different policies in other districts related to this to just get a sense of sort of where we fall, and the, the one change that I saw, and I believe it's in the Hopkins policy that I looked at several, that sort of made me feel more comfortable, was I think a clear articulation of our responsibility as in loco parentis, the, the sort of legal term, if this were to happen, and there's a, there's a sort of clause in their policy that says it is actually the responsibility of the school to ensure the student knows that they do not have to answer questions, and so that, just even that one little thing made me feel quite a bit more comfortable because otherwise I sort of felt like it was, this was happening to one of our students in our building and we were, we gave permission and then largely sort of exited the process in a way that was making me feel quite uncomfortable.
So there is language out there that would, that you think would be helpful inclusion?
I did, yeah, and I'm, I'm happy to, to share that, but.
I'll withdraw my vote. I prefer to wait until we see this language. Thank you.
I would also add, that was a lot of the conversation Crystal and I had, was that administrators are required to act in loco parentis or in, in place of the parent in that situation, and so that is actually an expectation, and so putting that out there certainly wouldn't, that would actually further clarify the expectation of administrators in that situation, would probably be some helpful language, so.
Okay, so we will put that one off until the next meeting.
Piling up.
Our old business should go quickly next time.
There we go.
Really old business.
Really old business. Okay, so we will move on to new business and school board self-evaluation. Okay, so, we will move on to new business and school board self-evaluation.
All right, so, within our policies, is school board self-evaluation, we do have a tool, there is, however, the MSBA has now published an additional tool that they are offering to create some data analysis for, and so, one of the things, and I'm not necessarily saying this is something to pass at the moment, but I want us to openly be aware of it and give some reflection on whether or not we want to consider using the tool, I am recommending that we strongly consider it, and while I say in here recommending implementing the self-evaluation service, obviously, were we to go to this, we may want to consider then changing our policy on school board self-evaluation and changing our methodology, and so, one idea would be to try this for a year, see how it works, see if it's effective, and go from there, but the school board basically provides opportunity for us to self-evaluate ourselves and then actually come out and provide professional development to the board to support us based on our own self-evaluation, the things that we look at on the work that we're trying to accomplish.
Is there a cost to this? Or is this included in our...
At present, it's included in our fees, perhaps at a future date that would change.
And if we took their in-service day, the two to three hour in-service, there would be additional, I think there's additional cost for that.
I believe you're right.
But, if we did just the baseline, they would, they'd take, they'd take our answers, go like them, summarize them, and get them to the center seats?
Correct.
And then, do they, I know a lot of times when you provide this kind of information to MSBA, they utilize it for teaching and information, do they use it for some, I mean, they probably de-identify and everything, but...
I bet they would, I bet they would, that would be great.
I mean, it seems like a good, because they do a seminar on board self-evaluation.
Right.
So...
I, I don't want to, I don't want to put us or our predecessors down, but I'm willing to bet they put more time into the questions that are asked and how to respond to them than I have in reviewing what we are offered on an annual basis, so, I'll put myself down. So, the extent to which they, I don't know how long, what, what the content of it is and how long it takes, but I bet it would be good. I mean, he says it's reliable and valid, that's gotta be true. I'd be willing to try it, though.
That's a try, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's worth a try, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think we lose by try it.
All right, so, we won't look to change policy, I'll gather the appropriate information to share things with you, and we will make sure to...
Well, in terms of changing policy, so, the suggestion would be then that, that we would do this and it would duplicate the other one, I mean, are we obligated to follow the policy, the, the self-evaluation is that, that exists, do we, does it exist within policy or guideline?
There is school board self-evaluation, there is a guideline and a form, we could certainly say that for this year, we were going to utilize this as our self-evaluation as a trial basis, in lieu of, in lieu of the other methodology to see how it works.
Or, we could, I mean, not to make extra work for ourselves, but we could look at both to compare, I mean, I want, I don't know how different they are, and to see if we get more out of one versus the other.
Do you mean to actually do both and then compare the outcomes?
Well, I was contemplating that, yeah, it sounds kind of silly now, we just say it that way out loud, but...
I mean, I understand the intent, I would worry that that might tax us to the point that then we don't really go all in on...
Either one.
Right, yeah.
So, if we, if we were to do this one, do we, are we required to change policy or say that we're adopting this one for this year, or do we have to, would we, I mean, suspend the policy, suspend the form that we have out there, rescind the form that we have out there?
I think...
If it's a guideline, we don't even need it.
Yeah, I think we would be fast off to be clear on, on that, given that the policies are publicly available and the public very well, there may be an interested community member who's taken a look to see what our practice is. The one piece that I was going to say, having not looked at the content of the MSBA self-eval, to me, the critical piece of the self-eval is the goal-setting piece, so I guess I would just want to be sure, I mean, I'm assuming that the MSBA self-eval...
Addresses that.
Addresses that, but I guess that would be a piece I'd want to be sure. I mean, I would agree that every, I would agree that it's unlikely that there's any specific question or, you know, content area that's not covered, but I think that the personal goal-setting piece is an important part from, for, because I think the self-eval would be real, there needs to be action attached to it.
So, there is a policy saying that the board will engage in self-evaluation, and then there is a guideline, so, this would actually qualify as, this wouldn't mean we had to weigh the policy, it would mean that we are utilizing a different form than the one in 209-1, which would completely work, to see how that worked.
So, do we need to move this, is this an action?
This is not currently an action item.
Well, all right, this is for an action item.
All right, well, then, you would be then approving this as the methodology for self-evaluation.
I'll, I'll move this presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Paul, a second by Ms. Brockie, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion to try out this new school board self-evaluation passes. So, we will move on to board policy 979, community use of schools.
All right, and so, we are looking at 979 and the accompanying guidelines, which is community use of schools and how we work with organizations to partner for our buildings and our public spaces, and how we do that. It basically outlines the overall concept within the general statement of policy in 979, and then, we have already made some initial red-line changes to align to current practice and to some of the things that bring us up to speed with what is going on in regard to community use of schools. Are you good?
Yep, so, just a couple items, Shannon Lindberg in our facilities department, in the athletic and facilities department, went through an extensive review of what our current practices are, took a look at what are the city's guidelines, took a look at a number of other school districts, and just did a lot of research to try to align both our fee schedules as well as some of the applications tied in with it. Couple key things to point out, a lot of it just is lining up with our current practices and some definitions and clarifications that you can see are added into this guideline. One of the bigger changes here is the definition of a Richfield group organization or activity consisting of 75%, which is up from 50%. Couple pieces tied in with that, that 75% lines up with what most other school districts do, as well as what the city of Richfield does for defining a Richfield city organization. When we look at our association partners or kind of some of our feeder programs in the athletic program, the RBI program or the baseball association is the only one that would not meet the 75%, but being it is the exclusive baseball provider within Richfield, it would be grandfathered in as part of that feeder program in the category two component, I believe it is. So, that was kind of the exception of what we were taking a look at, they're running in the mid-sixties, everybody else is at 80% or above when we're looking at the other associations that are in that category two partnership. There may be some other ancillary programs that aren't part of those official sanctioned groups when it comes to defining Richfield participation that would fall out of that at that point. Again, a lot of this is just clarifications and definitions, inclusions in that, the other piece that's tied in with this is the approving of permits and timelines associated with it, specifically, one of the things that we find is that we have a number of people that are applying for use of our athletic spaces well in advance of our seasons and just wanting to put some guidelines in place that our Richfield athletic programs or the school district athletic programs are given priorities around that, as well as some timing, so it's clear that that's approved in a four-month cycle just prior to each one of those seasons. The non-athletic spaces like auditoriums and things like that would still be available on a larger basis, and approved anytime after June 30th. Information about charges and things like that, clarification of the fact that if there's a need to have supervision or custodial time or things like that, that those things are charged, a variety of different positions there, also a clarification that there needs to be some school district employee on-site, we currently have that practice in most of our spectrums where either there's a coach, or there's a custodian, or somebody else that's in the building, we're not necessarily adding site supervisors to every one of the programs, which is something the board has been sensitive to in the past because of just that cost factor tied in with it, but if there are programs that we feel need that supervision, then that gives us the authority to identify that in those situations as well. A lot of the rest of it is just clarification, there is a similar grounds guidelines that we're in the process of reviewing that would mirror most of these pieces tied in with this, and just with that, I'd stand if there are any questions or anything else that the board would like us to take a look at as part of these guidelines, obviously, it's not a policy and we don't see significant changes for the policy being needed, but just kind of because there's a lot of redlining, a lot of changes in this guideline, wanted to have the board have a chance to review that before we bring it for formal approval.
I really appreciate the work on this, and I do think it's helpful and will be clarifying, I had three, all quick things. In category one, I guess, the city government use in parks and recreation being two distinct things kind of surprised me, given that I, I feel like parks and recreation is under the city government umbrella, so, that's a very small thing. The bigger question I had and flagged for Steve earlier is just not being sure that those potential additional charges are clear enough in here, I think that the tables do a great job of saying what the actual space rental per hour would be, I'm not sure if somebody read this, they would be clear about the potential additional costs for staff on-site, and so, my, my question for the next round is just, is there a way to actually make that more specific or to make sure that that is, you know, articulated so people actually really do get that there is potentially an additional cost?
So, one of the things that Shannon does a great job with is when a permit is submitted, then she sends out an estimate of what that would be. So, then, that clarifies those details with the clarification of if additional cleaning time is charged, you know, then you have to pay those actual costs, but here's what is estimated, so they work hard to do a good projection at that point, that's the hands-on piece, this is the guidelines of what we use then to drive into the system...
Yeah.
And then, kind of that guideline of authority, so...
And I'm sure that part is clear, I guess, for me, it's just, if somebody were to look at the guidelines, I'm not sure they would know that then Shannon is going to communicate that with them, and I just don't want somebody to be surprised, I guess, if it feels like it's not as clear in this guideline as when they actually initiate that contact and start the process, so, it's more feedback on the guideline than I think what is actually happening right now. And then, the third thing is, I think there have been a couple instances recently where people have struggled to figure out who to contact on day of related to space rental, and I think that's a process thing, not a guideline thing, but just how to make sure that that information is shared and is available to folks when they do actually get to that rental confirmation step.
For example, right, that would be something to add to the permit.
Great, yep.
Yeah, we're working with the technology, it's a standard form, so Shannon's working with the technology company to add the contact phone...
Perfect.
To see if they are able or willing to make that adjustment to the form that gets sent back to people.
So, when people apply to use a space, they fill out an electronic form?
Yes.
And then, they get something in return, basically confirming that they have that space?
Correct.
So, the one thing in here that I noticed is that the circumstances when a district activity needs to be rescheduled and a conflict occurs, so that, that basically they might lose that space, is there a timeline on that where, you know, where, where someone that is planning to use the space would get a reasonable notification before that rather, you know, so that they would have some kind of notification in advance that they were bumped or whatever, that something else...
There isn't a specific timeline, a lot of that is going to tie into the, more of the, the ground space, so, when we have cancellations of spring sports, all of a sudden, we have different fields that are needing now to be used for a school function versus something that somebody has used, it doesn't happen very frequently, and there are a few times where PTO events and things like that don't end up on the calendar, and so, they're working as soon as facilities department is aware of the situation and conflict and communicating and trying to find alternative spaces, but we haven't limited ourselves to say that, you know, we won't reschedule a track meet for the next day, if that's what's needed for the high school league, but then, then we coordinate with them and communicate as soon as we are aware of the situation. So, I'd be hesitant to put guidelines in that then limit us from being able to use it for our students and for those spaces, but they work to resolve it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Sometimes, it's a challenge when a building is coordinating an activity and then, that's not always being entered into the system in a timely manner.
Yeah, I just think it's, with the electronic system and having a master calendar, I think, a situation like that where weather or something causes something to be bumped, that's extremely reasonable and that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
I would just want to make sure we weren't, that that wasn't a regular practice because...
Correct.
Say, somebody forgot to schedule some space or something like that.
Shannon does not enjoy those conversations on either side of things, so...
When you were answering Crystal's comments about the grid, it sounded as though Shannon may have latitude on the, the assignment of whether, whether staff member needs to be on duty, is that accurate, or is it a certainty that if someone rents out, say, one of the gyms, that they, that they will be assigned custodial time as well, or some other staff members?
So, the time is assigned if it's not functioning within the current school program, so, for the most part, right now, the added hours are for times outside of our regular custodial time, one of the things that we are taking a look at is there are a number of events that just create additional workload on our custodians that require additional cleaning and things like that, and so, those are some situations where we're looking at some additional charges for those situations, just because it's held from seven to nine on a Thursday night, doesn't mean our custodial team isn't having to pick up additional workload or we may have to be identifying somebody else to help support that work, so that is something that we are continuing to look at what the situation is, sometimes it's the size of the group, sometimes it's what the specific program is.
I'll just say the category two people will be very sensitive to, to the, you know, if it's $10 per, per, say, gym use right now, which is very, which is a very friendly cost, but if that were to change and they had to pay for two hours of custodial time, that would be very noticeable to the organizations.
Yep, yep, and in those situations, obviously, what we've looked at with the guidelines and with the policy is the board's interest in having our buildings accessible to the community, and that's something that I think we've had conversations with the board year after year, every time this comes up, obviously, with the investment that the community is making in our schools, that's something we want to continue to be able to have as provided for, at the same time, as our, as we've gone through budget cuts and our custodial team has been reduced in different budget-cutting series, those are some of the things that we're having to take a look at, and it's really going to be more of a situation of what's the specific need in those situations, we're not looking to add time just to have some staff members on time, many other metro districts, anytime there's an athletic association in using gyms, they have a community head person that's there sitting at the desk just having people in as a supervision piece, that's not what's being proposed at this point as part of this process, it's more of, you know, if you have a foam party in the gym or something like that, and it creates a significant cleanup, then that would be something that would be a challenge, so...
One other comment, just in 979.2, section 4B, it's, it's listing the scheduling...
Okay.
So, the top section, I think, I think it's in omission, the, the use of the high school, RMS softball fields, the middle school softball fields, I think, probably be along on that list, is that...
It could be.
Especially, especially though the, the, the ones that are just east of the school.
This guideline hasn't been reviewed yet, so, the focus was on, the focus was on the point one, you know, and then, we're looking at similar situations tied in with this, but this one is currently under review as well, so, yeah, this is just what's currently in place without any changes, but we'll, we'll, I think, both that, as well as the use of the STEM facilities, some of the STEM facilities are scheduled and are just open spaces, but those are the couple pieces I think are looked at there, and then applying similar timelines and guidelines to this.
Just, just for clarity, so the board is aware, I, I still am on the board for Richfield baseball, so, we can talk later if...
Might abstain on this one.
Whether I abstain or have, or, 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 but enough to, to not go. Whether I abstain or have, right, or conflicted enough to not go.
Any other feedbacks for the, otherwise we'll play around with it and bring it back for the next meeting?
Thank you. And you're going to stay because we're moving on to annual budget revision 2017-18, am I right?
Towards efficiency on this one. So we have the 2017-18 revised budget, requesting your approval of that tonight. This then leads into development of the proposed budget for the second meeting in May and then the final adopted budget in June. Again, we're looking at the revised budget process. We generally do that in March, April of every year. Really looking at what are the revenue changes now that we have more information on our enrollment? We have more information on legislative settlements or legislative actions and things like that, as well as a current projection regarding our expenditures. On really a top-level scale, good news is we have $124 million more in revenue coming in this year than what was originally projected, and we have $9 million, $9.5 million less in expenditures. Now, obviously, there's a whole lot of information that's tied in with that, and there are a couple big chunks of information where those two pieces are sitting, and it really is kind of in that building construction component of it, as well as a bond refunding on that debt service piece and how that's being booked. So that's the big picture total budget, and we have different funds tied in a little bit differently. When we look at the revenue updates, the changes, or the most significant changes on this are the enrollment projections, the adjustment of the formula. Originally, when we built the budget for current year, the state legislature was still in session, I was trying to think of the right word. So we had projected a 1% increase, which is one of the conversations on that state formula. It actually came in with a 2% increase, so that formula adjustment was included in here. We have also realized the actions around our self-education center academy or our 287 fiscal host agreement, which we've talked a little bit about with some of the enrollment projections. It's something that went into place in about 2015. Much of it is a kind of money in, money out, and so there's kind of that fiscal host action taking place. But we've kind of built that into the budget, both on the revenue side as well as the expenditure side of things, so that we can have better projections when we get down to the audit. Also looked at updating special education with information about what our special education funding was last year, increased that slightly. It's something we continue to watch because our special education funding is tied specifically to our tuitions to other school districts and how those are realized. And so it's again, something that we're watching because we don't have a lot of control and often don't have much information about it until actually the fiscal year is over, when we get more information from the other school districts. We also had an increase in our voluntary pre-kindergarten program of 24 students this year, so that also is factored into this piece. The Fund VI construction, adding that $119 million in the bond sale, built into that construction fund as a separate fund. And then some other miscellaneous adjustments like grants, federal programs, and then updating our Fund 20/21 self-funded insurance programs. Similar things on our expenditure updates, staffing, actually now that we know exactly what our staff is, who our staff is, what their steps and lanes are placed, we've updated the information in that area. Again, the expenditures tied in to mirror that fiscal host agreement, the special education, tuition, and federal programming component of things with expenditures in those programs, the additional expenditures with the increase in the voluntary pre-kindergarten program, projected expenditures for current fiscal year for that construction fund, the OPEB debt service refunding. This was simply something that was booked differently than how it was originally booked last year. Originally, when we built this budget, we thought because one of the refundings actually required expenditures in February of this year, that the expenditures would show up this year. When the auditors reviewed it, they found that it had to be booked a different way, so it was actually booked into last year. If you remember the audit, there was that increase in expenditures. And then this now is our reduction of those expenditures that we had projected on our books for this year. So again, that's just kind of how it was booked into the system. And then other miscellaneous adjustments, each one of our buildings or programs has carryover intra-school accounts where they've received donations and grants. At the end of the year, we tie out how much money is remaining in those intra-school funds and then build those in to the budget as well as grants, federal programs, and then updating our projected expenditures for that self-funded insurance program. So kind of a top-level look at that. Here again is that same image here. You can see net impact in our general fund of $2.9 million of additional revenue. Again, much of that is tied in with the enrollment, the formula change, as well as that fiscal host agreement, which was over $1 million just in and of itself, and then similar increases in the expenditures for some of those key areas as well. So that's the general fund. Updating a number of these other programs with smaller amounts, that building construction, the Fund VI, $119 million in revenue, and then right now having $2.7 million projected in expenditures prior to June 30th, current fiscal year, some small changes in the debt servicing, updating that, the internal service funds. We actually added a Fund 21 for our dental self-funded program as part of this revised budget, which we haven't had separately, so that we have two separate funds, one for our medical and one for dental. And then that large reduction in the expenditures in that OPEB debt service 47, which was recommended by our auditors. When we look at kind of by the revenue sources, which is where we typically take a look when we look at budgets, we have that increase in primarily is really in that state funding component of it with the enrollment, as well as with special education, as well as the funding coming in from the state for that 287 agreement. That's the largest category there. And then when we look at our expenditures, salaries and wages is where we see about $500,000 increase in our revised budget. The purchase services, that also ties in with the tuition because that's payments made to other school districts as part of that 287 fiscal host agreement, falls under that purchase services category. And then some other amounts in some of the other categories based on current projections. And then by program series, here you can see kind of that site administration, district administration are relatively flat. The increase is in the support services and the regular instruction, specifically as well as special education and facilities. And then, so that's the revised budget proportion of it and what we're looking at the approval. This is just another model. If you remember, in January, we started looking at year-to-date actuals compared to revised budget. We partnered with schoolfinances.com to provide a little bit more cohesive or comprehensive analysis, and we're in the process of updating this so that we have the data in our old system on a monthly basis. We're going to be drilling that into this system so that we have that for future years and can actually look at a three-year trend. This information is in the packet as well. Here's where we will start to look at, here's our June 30, 16, June 30, 17 end of year, the adopted budget, and then here's the revised budget, which we're proposing tonight. The next column has the received year-to-date, and that's as of March 31, 2018. The encumbered are things that we have purchase orders for that we haven't received or the payments haven't actually made, but projected payments have been put into the system, and then what dollar amount is remaining in the budget, and then the percent of budget received or expended as of March 31, 18, and then how that compares to the previous two years. When we presented this information in January, one of the things that was noted is that we had not received as much money in significant dollars compared to what we had already expended as of December 31st. That was a situation where we had actually received the property taxes from the county, but we had not yet booked them into the system. So they were received, we had the money, but it's a timing factor. What we found is that a number of years, at this point, we've had about half of what was received booked into the system, and then the rest of it all was booked into the end of the year. One of the things our director of finance, James Gilligan, did is we said, well, let's start to right-size this right now, and so starting to receive that more on an updated basis. And so that's one of the significant changes you see is that in property taxes, as of March 31, 18, we received 85%. The previous two years, we had only received 48%. Again, it's a situation where we received it, it's just a matter of when it gets booked into the system. A lot of times there are adjustments that are made at the end of the year, so they just book those kind of towards that end of the past as well, as well as the local revenues tied in with that as well. Everything else is relatively consistent when we look across the board for expenditures year-to-date. Certainly, there are different categories that are tied differently, but the expenditures year-to-date are relatively consistent in both of those situations as well. And then the second page of that document has the other funds. So that first page is just the general fund program, the 1, 3, and 5, represented general fund, transportation, and the student activities. This is the rest of those programs specifically tied in with that, with the same information from the previous. So with that, I'd stand for any questions you may have. Otherwise, this is one of those regular reports that we're going to be moving towards, so that you'll see this on a quarterly basis here in the next year, and then perhaps moving into even more frequent basis moving forward as well.
Question, maybe it is in here and maybe it's not. With the schoolfinances.com, does that show us kind of where we're tracking with unassigned fund balance? Well, I guess we could think about all of our categories of fund balance?
It's not going to show the tracking because it's actual just kind of year-to-date what's in our budget and how we've spent year-to-date. So these documents are giving, obviously, we've revised the budget, so it's a way for us to bring that forth for your review. Payment schedules and revenue schedules all throughout the year are going to be difficult to measure on that. So this does provide that information.
So if I can make sure I'm understanding correctly, what I think I hear you saying is that because of the timing challenges when you're mid-year, that it would be probably not of value to put out a number that may have no meaning? Is that what you're saying basically?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
So to that question, the school finances isn't going to provide that on a regular basis. When we look at the projected revised budget, obviously, our revenue right now for the general fund is projected to be $63.2 million. The revised budget for expenditures is projected to be $62.2. So we see there's a net positive impact on revenues over expenditures, and so we would anticipate the fund balance to go up. Where that actually plays out is something we typically take a look at after the fiscal year when our actual expenditures are planned. So if you remember, the adopted budget last year actually had its deficit spending by about $250,000. So that's one of the factors that's tied in with this as well. So that's now been covered essentially by where our current revenue is projected to
So with that clarification, I would be willing to move the revised budget as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to donations.
All right, so Richfield STEM School PTO made donations to both the media center for books and to the art department, $615.98 to the art department and $1,422.29 to the media center. So we are thankful to the STEM PTO.
I'll move that we accept this donation with gratitude.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we accept these donations with gratitude. So we will move on to advanced planning and the legislative update.
Sure.
I'll turn things to Mr. Tensing.
Yeah, I did have the opportunity to attend a MSD last week with Principal Zambrino. It was good to have him there. A number of updates. A couple of items, so in a big picture fashion, in terms of what we might be looking for from any sort of supplemental budget that might come forward this year, is that there's a lot of competition at the Capitol to do tax informity, federal tax informity, and also funding transportation and infrastructure projects. And so the sort of current bills as they stand, I mean, the finance bills are still in committee, but I think that we'll sort of see how that plays out. Funding that looks relative, priorities that look like they're relatively popular are around school safety, potentially something around trying to reduce that special across subsidy, although I think the order of magnitude would be pretty small in terms of what we could expect there. Where there is a little bit more positive news is on the TRA front. It sounds like from an AMSD perspective, they were relatively pleased with some of the TRA stabilization measures that are moving forward. The policy, omnibus policy bill has cleared committee, and so both the House and Senate are moving, starting to move forward. There are a couple of areas that are sort of highlights that I think I would like to sort of make the board aware of, and areas that I think we might think about giving some feedback to our legislators. The first one that was of some concern to me is that there is, both the House and Senate bills are looking at bringing back a star rating system for what they're calling academic assessment of academic, I mean, it's basically in that category of adequate, you know, the old adequate yearly progress system that we did function under to some extent during the plenty of years. And it is a little different to the extent that this system would take into account more than just test scores. It would take into account gap closure, it would take into account graduation rates, and I believe there may be some other factors that are looked at. But there are concerns, anytime you're trying to capture all of the complexity that goes into trying to assess and rate the performance of a school or a school district, and how do you sort of realistically boil that down into a five-star system. So that is something that I wanted to make the board aware of. I personally don't know that I see this as an improvement over where we stand now, given that, you know, there is certainly a need to be accountable, and there is certainly a need to be transparent, but I'm not sure that putting five stars on it really pushes us forward in those goals. The other piece that was of some concern initially was under the student data privacy section, where there are some, the legislature is looking to regulate the use of student data on digital devices. And as I sort of looked further and dug further into the details on this, I think that the spirit of what the legislature is attempting to do is to sort of be aware of the capacity for technology vendors to be collecting data on students. And I think that in the, what I feel is personally, I think a good thing is that the legislature is attempting to sort of regulate that collection of student data. So talking about remotely collecting information about student's location and the keystrokes or websites on a device. So I think that it's good that the legislature is looking at protecting the data that can be generated from a student's use of a device that is essentially owned by, a district-owned device. There's some concern with the bill in that it also prohibits school districts or teachers from monitoring that data as well, although there are a number of exceptions to that prohibition. So it appears that we would still be able to, if there was a need to investigate a student's use of a device under sort of our acceptable use policies. So for instance, if we were concerned about cyberbullying or we were concerned about some other type of misuse of the devices, there would still be the ability for districts to carry out that investigation. And I think the other piece is that this particular statute does not seek to limit the ability the ability of the teacher to regulate the student's actual use of the device during, in the classroom. So for instance, if the teacher is saying that now it's time for the devices to be powered down, and let's all focus on something else, that is, is not, that particular piece is not regulated by, by this statute that I can tell. So those are the big pieces. Oh, the one other piece. It's a little disappointing right now that it looks like the, the issue with the school trust lands, so the ability to, you know, the school trust lands are set aside, you know, were set aside in the 19th century for generating, these are lands that are mostly in northern Minnesota, they're basically lands that were to be revenue generating for the purpose of funding public education. But the way that those are sort of geographically parceled out, it makes it kind of challenging for, to sort of manage them effectively. And so there had been some efforts to try and work with the DNR to do some parcel land exchanges, to sort of make these become more effective revenue producers. That looks like it's going to be challenging to get that done this session. So we may or may not see movement on that. So those are the big pieces that I took home. I guess I'd be certainly open to and interested in hearing feedback on the, you know, whether we as a board feel that with the rating system, that this is something that we want to communicate as a group with our legislators on as opposed to as individuals.
So the rating system is not one that's currently in place, right?
That is correct.
It would reintroduce similar to what was in place a handful of years ago.
A modified version of, yes.
I think one of the things that I share is the email is the, the sort of concern that this effort is happening right now while the Department of Education is working on reporting that is required under ESSA. And so it feels to me like very duplicative and not-aligned efforts to try to get at the same thing, which is how do we make accessible and available in human terms to the public information about how public schools are doing? And so that is where I am kind of, you know, a little bit flummoxed by the current efforts and from what I have sort of seen and heard, it is not something that the governor is likely to support. So I'm not really sure what the, what the future holds for it, but that piece about, like, we are as a state working on something that is required under federal law, let's actually put our energy behind making that what it should be instead of introducing something that is sort of counter to that is where I tend to land right now.
Whether it overlaps at 75% and creates all these other things.
Yeah.
So we got to duplicate the work, because it's not like they'll use the same forms.
Right. A lot of the tension actually does come into the star rating or letter rating or something that, that takes very complex things and boils it down into that very sort of stark A to F, red to green, however you want to put it, system. So it seems like that's where a lot of the, the energy for doing this is coming from and where a lot of the opposition is coming from.
And I have yet to see a ranking system that figures out how to equitably score things, so to speak, in a way that takes into account all the factors that go into schools that has a widely balanced mechanism for scoring and doesn't end up just predictably punishing certain sets of schools, whether they are performing, so to speak, or not during, via many different.
Likely odds. Right, I mean, we usually don't.
I mean, if we don't talk around.
There are aspects of these, these crude rules that ignore some of the things that we do well.
Pretty typically, districts with higher percentages of poverty and higher, higher percentages of diversity end up in lower ranking of the scale systems. Pretty typically.
Thank you for that information, Pete. We will move on to information and questions from the board.
I was just going to share one thing. I'm continuing to get more fluent and deeper into 287 board work, and I'm enjoying it a lot and learning a lot. And so we'll try to bring back little, you know, things that I think might be of interest here and there. And one thing that we learned about in our board meeting just last Thursday is a pilot that the district is undertaking in partnership with the Wilder Foundation that is a therapeutic teaching model. Very exciting to hear about, and it is actually being funded through state funds and a grant that was made available last year that the district applied for and was granted. So this is a two-year pilot that will be covered, and I think there's a lot of excitement to see what the results will be. Wilder will be studying it through their research arm, which is pretty renowned to give a sense of impact in what happens when you have a teacher and a therapist actually together in the classroom, working with students who are experiencing the most complex trauma at the youngest years in the hopes of, you know, sort of addressing that early intervention and how do we support our youngest students who are going through incredibly traumatic events in their life. So, are you looking at it right now?
I am. It was, no, it was a very interesting read. The spotlight that they sent out about that was something that I found very interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is exciting.
Sounds heavenly.
Yeah, it sounds exciting.
And you're going to get more about it at your superintendent's meeting.
I will be there on Thursday, yes.
I have one thing, the Friends of Wood Lake have their annual fundraising dinner and silent auction, that is April 27. If you go to their, their website, you can find the city, Friends of Wood Lake, if you can buy tickets there, I'd be happy to see you.
It's fun, they usually auction off some cool stuff.
Like a coyote.
Maybe, maybe, maybe a photo montage. That would probably go over really well.
Just as a reminder or update to the board, our students are planning in recognition of the University of Columbine, a walkout, and I believe there's also a national walkout that day on April 20th, that's this Friday. They are, I believe the national walkout is scheduled for 10 with the suggestion that you do not return to school. Our students have planned to walk out at 10:45. They plan to meet in the cafeteria to organize, and they're planning to walk to City Hall. Classrooms where there aren't students or significant numbers of students left, the teachers will go along to supervise. If necessary, classrooms will be supervised or combined where teachers can supervise who want to stay back. We don't really know how many students will end up participating. They plan on returning, they've indicated they plan on returning to school at 12:05, at which time they will be allowed to return to class. We've also learned that some students will be planning to go to the National Rally, which is going to be held at the Capitol, which launches at approximately 1 o'clock. And we will be excusing students who bring in written permission for that or have called in for permission for that also. So I'll be able to provide an update to the board at the next meeting as to what occurs and some of the things that happen on that day. So again, 10:45, they're planning to organize as a group in the cafeteria, to walk to City Hall, and then to return, and they plan to address some of our city staff at that time. We've been working together to, to partner with our students as they've shared this request with us and ask for our support.
We also, we also have the, is that April 30th, the student event, student-driven event with four, with some legislators?
Yes. Actually, they will be working soon in their advisories to create questions and information to share with our panel. We do have, and have confirmed for the 30th, Keith Ellison, Linda Slocum, our own Christine Malik, and Mayor Pat Elliott. It'll be about 50 minutes. Haven't locked down the exact time, but it is sometime in the 10 o'clock to 11:30 hour. And it'll be open only to 11th and 12th grade students. And so it won't be an open event, it's just the, Representative Ellison specifically had wanted to meet with our 11th and 12th grade students, and also felt that that would be the most appropriate group. The other piece is that it's also within our auditorium, and so we actually don't have space to accommodate more than that, and we want to make sure we don't turn any students away. So it's going to be a closed event, open as a panel just to our 11th and 12th grade kids. We'll be providing questions and feedback for them, and so we'll be working together in our advisory for them to have that opportunity.
I just want to commend the students for organizing these and just state, you know, so people, the 11 people on YouTube are aware that the, you know, the students organized this, this was student-driven, not grown-up driven, not, you know, not adults in the, you know, this is, this is something they created to support their own interests. And so we're just facilitating that, right? Just, they approached the administration, requested permissions, outlined what the ask was, and what, you know, so.
And coordinated.
As people get sensitive to why we would allow, allow, right, the students who would come to us as a group with really well-thought-out requests.
Well-thought-out requests and also sort of engaging in how they're asking and trying to grow, and how can we be participants in civic engagement? You know, the panel itself came out of the ideas of our students, saying we don't necessarily want to, that was the previous walkout, we don't necessarily want to walk out, we actually want to talk to lawmakers directly since they make the rules that help keep our schools safe.
Well, the, the student, the student leaders or the organizers.
Yes.
Came to that conclusion. There were other students who had different conclusions, but unfortunately, I'm not blaming them, but they didn't necessarily organize as a block well enough to have similar recognition. It's not, it's not a blame thing, it's just, that's just how it unfolded. From what I saw, it seemed to unfold quickly, and therefore didn't happen, but in the, in that vacuum, the, the other students who said, "Well, we'd rather do something more organized, put things together," that allowed us to interface with them and sort of carve out an environment in which they could thrive.
Yes, I believe, you know, the board has guided from your vision that we should be doing our work to support students, and when they come to us with requests, work with them to help support those as best as we can. I mean, in this case, we obviously had students approach, so student-led. As you think about the walkouts that have occurred nationwide, the key, the key action from our perspective tonight is student-led, certainly not adult-led. So that requires students not only to lead them, but if they would like us to support in some way, then they have to lead that work with us and to engage in that dialogue. And so in this case, that is exactly what happened. Students led that to try to determine ways that this would, would be effective for them, and that areas, areas that we could support and have that in partnership. And so we were, we were proud and honored to be able to participate and work with our students to support them in these efforts.
That's important to note, these are the same students who during the other walkout reached out, they made a decision, "That's not what we want to do, we want to engage our legislators." And they're the ones who share the message with the phone across the whole school. And as you say, we want to value that they're, you know, they're empowered to do these things and to take leadership into the other thing, and as opposed to the school was not going to organize the previous walkout, and the school wasn't going to be the, you know, like the adults, basically.
Right. I mean, I think that's easy to use, very easy words. It's very inappropriate for adults to lead and organize a student walkout.
Right.
Our role is to organize the education of our students. If our students in, in the course of that education want to engage us in a conversation around, in around how we can support them, that is one piece. However, for us to organize something like the school walkout, it just, that runs counter to, to the work that we're doing.
Right. So we will move on to future meeting dates. May 7th at 7:00 PM, regular board meeting, May, how can that be? Our next meeting will be in May. And May 21st, 7:00 PM, regular board meeting. Are there any suggested future agenda items?
One, which is that I would love to have an end-of-year discussion about our lunch policy after having gone through a full year and lessons learned and, you know, there are recommendations for any changes that we should make from our nutrition staff, both in schools and if you're at the district. And then I think related to it, I saw various things in recent weeks about potential legislation tied to this as well.
Yeah.
And so especially if that, you know, proceeds, I think it would be helpful to have that conversation and how that might affect us.
What kind of legislation?
So the legislation that's on the table would essentially, if I recall correctly, and I may not have 100% of the details on this, but it essentially would prohibit school districts from collecting unpaid lunch debt. And so I do think that the work that we've already done on this is going to, is going to help us to be able, no matter how the legislation moves, that's going to help us to be able to, to be, to be in good shape. I mean, I, if I recall correctly, Steve, the last time you kind of took a look at it, the amount that we had managed to raise in terms of donations to cover, that, that was basically keeping us whole or better.
So Pam's scheduled to come to the next board meeting and present a nutrition services update, and that will be part of it. I believe our current meal debt is right around 9,000. We have to date received about 4,500 in donations into that program.
Okay, so we're not, we're not quite, we're not quite in the black there, but nevertheless, I mean.
And that's speaking out, Tom, I have one quick review of what I believe of our set.
Yeah. So, but you're right, crystal various legislation to keep an eye on.
In turn, yeah.
I brought it up last time, the, the review of the RSET program.
Yes, that is on the docket in the next couple of meetings.
And I assume that the high school has, has registered for the fall, is that correct?
I believe so, yes, and they're working out schedules and classes.
I'd be curious to see if they're, if they're, you know, are there new courses, are there, were there hotspots or things that picked up? You know, we heard some information tonight about, of course, that, you know, some of us would love to see Ron, but it didn't, and so what can we do? Just as we, you know, sitting here in April, it'd be, I doubt we can do anything for the fall, but we can learn from it.
Good. So that's my summary of the high school and sort of a scheduling piece. Anything else?
Well, I will move that we adjourn the meeting.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Brocki. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.